Good evening. I'd like to call to order this city council meeting of Monday, February 10th at 6:03 PM. If the clerk could please take the roll.
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Vice Mayor DeBois?
Here.
Mayor Philseth? Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Philseth? Mayor Fine?
Here.
Councilmember Niss?
Here.
Councilmember Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka? Six present.
Thank you very much. So just a first order of business. Item number two, the recognition of our firefighters who responded to Sonoma County, has been pushed out as far as I understand from the city manager. But I see you gentlemen here, so. Ed, have we pushed out the Sonoma County recognition or?
Yes, that is correct. Our firefighters were unavailable this evening, so we'll find another date.
A couple of you seem like you are available. We deeply appreciate your service and commitment in work in Sonoma and in Palo Alto.
Y'all surprised us, sorry about that.
So, after moving that on, and thank you gentlemen, and our apologies. Let's move on to order number one, which is a proclamation honoring the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto. We have a couple of representatives tonight, including Ellen Forbes, the first vice president, Paula Collins, the treasurer, Jeanne Lithcote, the voter services co-chair, Liz Jensen, and Ellen Smith. And I have asked councilmember Allison Cormack to read the proclamation, and after that would love to have any comments from my colleagues as well.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Whereas the League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 as a mighty political experiment by the four mothers of the suffragists movement at the National American Women's Suffrage Association, and whereas their goal was to help the 20 million women who were granted the right to vote by the 19th Amendment, understand and carry out their new responsibility as voters, and whereas with the success of this effort and the tireless efforts over the last 100 years to strengthen and uphold its mission to empower voters and defend democracy, the League has become a trusted, nonpartisan grassroots organization, and whereas the League has sponsored legislation and fought in the courts to protect and strengthen voting rights and access and for free and fair elections, civil rights, children, community health and education, and whereas the League has consistently been noted for its nonpartisan election information, including sponsorship of candidate forums and information on state and local ballot issues, as well as its commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters, and whereas the League champions government systems that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable, and whereas the League believes that active and engaged citizens, irrespective of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation, are the hallmark of democracy. Now therefore, Adrian Fine, mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the entire city council, does hereby proclaim February 14th as League of Women Voters Day in the City of Palo Alto. We honor and congratulate the League of Women Voters on its 100th anniversary and commend the League for its significant contributions to empowering voters and making democracy work.
Thank you, councilmember. I see lights from councilmember Niss.
So, thank you all for coming tonight. Some of you I've known for a very long time. But I wanted to reflect just a little, because I moved here and had a baby a week later. And not surprisingly, I kind of wondered what I was doing. And what I recall is that somebody got me in the League within a few weeks, fortunately. And Ellen Smith, you'll probably remember babysitting was part of what went along with meetings then. So it was a terrific kind of arrangement. You did, you know, your one day or so a month, and you got to go to the rest of the meetings while somebody else took care of your baby. But at the same time, I began to learn so much about the city, what was going on in Sacramento, what was going on in Washington. There were study groups, there were any number of involved women in this community who made an incredible long-term difference. So it's wonderful to see the 100th anniversary and to see lots of you still involved. And yes, I do see Ellen Smith's husband sitting right next to her.
He's a member of ours.
Yes, and I know he's been involved for a long time. So it's nice to see you all tonight. Thank you for carrying on the mission. Appreciate it. Thanks.
So I just want to congratulate the League on its birthday. Thank you all for your tireless service to the city and the greater community of California and the whole state and our country. I think what's really inspiring to me is the League provides, you know, nonpartisan, impartial information about, I mean, I was just speaking to somebody who moved here from New York, and they're like, you know, "Why does the state ask me to vote on all these propositions? I don't know what I'm supposed to do." And the League, to me, is an essential resource in that. So I want to congratulate you. And I would like to invite any of you to come speak and address the council and those watching on TV. I believe you have some information on some of the election items happening this year and maybe the census as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Ellen Forbes. I'm first vice president of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto, and I wanted to thank you for this proclamation. We are proud of the League and its 100-year history. I wanted to remind everybody that we not only do voter registration in the schools of new citizens, at the VA Hospital, of members of the Palo Alto unhoused community, and we do special events at other organizations, but also we do voter education. At election time, we of course do our candidate forums you're all familiar with, and we do the pros and cons of the ballot measures. And I wanted to issue a special invitation to all of you and to the audience to attend our February 22 Voto Palooza, which celebrates the League's 100th anniversary, but also we are trying for 100% voter participation in Palo Alto in the March 3 primary. So that is going to be at, right next to the Rinconada Library at the Palo Alto Arts Center. The library is the main vote center for Palo Alto. There will be others, no more precincts, there will be vote centers starting now. And you have a chance to go over to the library with some suffragists and cast your ballot if you would like that day. The other thing we do, of course, is advocacy. We write and appear before you and planning and transportation, different commissions, especially our number one focus is housing, but also we are working on safe gun storage and climate change locally and at the state level. So that's just a little rundown of what we do. But I wanted to introduce Jeanne Lithcote, who will tell you more about the Voters' Choice Act and the census. Thank you.
Thank you for an incredibly bodacious proclamation. It was just grand. There are big things afoot, so voting processes have changed this year. A law was passed in 2016 called the Voters' Choice Act, which determined new ways and new processes for voting. In 2018, five counties of the 58 in California were chosen to try it out so that we could get out the wrinkles and so on. This year, 10 more counties have joined the original five, and so we have 15 counties who are operating according to the Voters' Choice Act, and those 15 counties actually hold more than 50% of the registered voters of the state of California. It of course includes Los Angeles. The big thing is there are going to be no more polling places. Everybody, whether they're requested or not, will get a vote by mail. Everybody wants to know why that is so. The research is robust, that when people go vote by mail, the participation rate increases. And the point of the Voters' Choice Act is to increase the number of people who actually engage in casting a ballot. You get a ballot, some people, have any of you gotten a ballot already? Absolutely. You can vote as of now. So instead of there being an election day, it's now an election 29 days. So you can vote as early as makes sense to you, okay? Just please remember to sign the envelope, okay? And there are three things that you can do with your vote by mail. You can put it in the US mail, you can take it to an official Dropbox, there's going to be one in the city council building, and you can drop it there. It's postage paid already, so there's no worries about that, and the Dropboxes are very secure. Or you can take it to one of these incredible new inventions, the vote centers. The most important thing is instead of going to a small polling place in a precinct, you may go to any Dropbox or any vote center in the whole of the county. So the county is our precinct now. The vote center, you can do, there's a 10-day vote centers, there are 4-day vote centers, not going to take a whole lot of time, but you can register and vote on the same day at a vote center. You can get your ballot printed out again if you made a mess of the first one. If you need one in a language of your birth, which makes sense, you can get it printed out in one of eight languages. You can get almost any question that anyone has, it can be answered right there. I must tell you that the new machines that are available for the blind and visually impaired, which enable them to actually complete their ballot by themselves for the very first time instead of having somebody fill it for them, are going to be a feature at all the vote centers as well. There's so much more. If there are any questions, don't hesitate to be in touch with me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So if I'm a Palo Alto resident, I'm listening on TV and I want to get some more information, where can I go?
To get information about the Voters' Choice Act?
Please, yes. Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, yes.
And just tell me, where should I go to get more information?
The League of Women Voters is a great place to go. Okay? L W W PaloAlto.org.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liz Jensen. I'm also on the board of the League of Women Voters. And in addition to the presidential primary election in March, there's another big event taking place that is central to our democracy, and that's the 2020 census. And the count is mandated by the Constitution and takes place every 10 years, and it counts everyone in the United States, the District of Columbia, and the five US territories. So starting in March, everyone will get, receive an invitation in the mail to answer the census. It can be answered in three ways: online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone's going to be asked to do it online first, but if you feel more comfortable by phone or by mail, that's another way to do it. It's important that we count everyone and that it's a complete count. It counts immigrants, the unhoused, undocumented, students who are studying abroad here, newborns, elderly, it needs to count everyone. And it's why is it important to count everyone? We need a complete count because $675 billion of federal funding is spent annually on all the states, $76 billion of which comes to California. So if there's an undercount, we will receive less federal funding. So that's one reason it's really important. We need it for our schools, our hospitals, our public transportation, our affordable housing, public services, emergency services, many, many things come from that. So in addition to funding, the census also determines the number of House of Representatives each state receives. So California, I believe, has 53. If we have an undercount in our population, we could lose a US House of Representative. So, and that's a strong, we probably might lose a House seat this year because they think California will have an undercount. So that could be a problem. One is we are a very hard state to count. It's a big state, there are large rural areas, we have a large immigrant population, it's a, the Census Bureau in California is a big get-out-the-effort to count, but it's a hard state to count. So they're a little bit worried, and California's population isn't increasing as fast as other states. That's another reason we might not, we might lose a House representative. So in addition to a number of House Representatives, also after each census, the results are used to redraw congressional and state legislative district boundaries, so adapting those to the population shifts. So redistricting is done after the census. There's no citizenship question on the census. Data's collected, it's safe and secure. It cannot be shared with FBI, the CIA, the DHS, ICE, or law enforcement. California needs a, very important to count. It is central to our democracy, so I encourage everyone to spread the word. Tell your family, tell your friends, tell your coworkers, when you're at the market and the bakery, tell everyone there that they need to answer the census. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So the message is, please vote, and also please be counted in the census this year. At this point, I'd like to entertain motions on this proclamation.
So moved?
So moved by the vice mayor and seconded by councilmember Niss. And if you would please vote on the board.
You.
And that passes seven to nothing. Congratulations all, thank you so much. And if I could invite some of you down here, I guess? Is that where doing photos now, we're up here?
Suppose I come up here, it's kind of nice.
Me, the vice mayor, Allison Redditt.
Good choice.
Let's go down here for a photo.
Everyone's invited.
It's yummy.
I should tell the street council.
Calm down, Dan.
The speaker I voted is included in your ticket.
So you're still getting the idol.
Yeah, it's everyone.
Oh, wow. Okay, let's see. Here you go.
All right. Perfect. Okay. Yep. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. Very good.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Did Winter take the tickets?
No, she can't go.
Oh, then I'll take them.
You sure? I only have one.
Never mind. I can't go without my husband.
Sorry.
You both get more chips.
Might have to have a second dinner.
So, want to thank the League for showing up tonight, and folks can get more information on their website if need be. Thank you all for coming. Moving on to our next item, we have two closed session items. One is a conference with city attorney on existing litigation, ABG-PACT versus the City of Palo Alto. This is also known as the College Terrace Center. And then item number four is a conference with the city attorney on existing litigation, a liability claim against the city by Julio Aravalo. We have a number of public speakers on item number three. You'll each have three minutes. Our first speaker is Melanie Grandell. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Fine and councilmembers. I live on Yale Street, and I moved there fairly recently. To have a market in the College Terrace Center was a consideration. I work with a cane, so it is very convenient for me to have a market close by. I am spending a lot of time in my garden. I see a lot of strollers come by, a lot of bikes, and there are many people in College Terrace who appreciate a market close by for some quick shopping. I was delighted when I learned that the market was going to open, and when I was there, the Coors told me, "Oh, the landlord is going to finish the building. This is just a soft opening before the grand opening. As soon as the doors, the main doors are fixed, the elevator is fixed, and we can put signage on." Unfortunately, this never materialized. These promises of the landlord were never done. Even more so, in June, the landlord wrapped the market in scaffolding and netting, so you couldn't find the market at all unless you walked by, because it was only a very small, knee-high sign. And furthermore, you could not park because the little trucks and even the cherry pickers were completely parking and taking Oxford Street. So I picked my way through the building trucks in order to get to the market. The shrouding stayed until January, and the market could not be successful when you cannot find it. We need a successful market there with a building, in a building that is finished and the elevators that are safe, and then a market can succeed. College Terrace needs this market because it is part of the building permit for the College Terrace Center. And I hope we will be able to realize this at some future point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Frank. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me. This is my first time here. I'm here because my wife and my six-year-old daughter asked me to come talk to you about this issue because they feel strongly about it. My family has lived near the College Terrace Center off of Stanford Avenue for about 10 years. We watched as the grocery store that used to be in that site was demolished in order to make way for College Terrace Center. Five years later, we had a brief ill-fated market, and then, to our joy, Corey's Market opened with the family that had previously occupied that spot. This was a major improvement in our life and in our community. But right after opening, as you just heard, in this brand-new building, Corey's was draped by scaffold, obscuring all signage and making it impossible for that family to use the outdoor space. I can't judge the facts of this case, but I know that the owners of Corey's Market or the operators of Corey's Market believe that this was a malicious action to drive them out of business. The result, in any case, is a major loss for our community and for our neighborhood. It results in fewer chance interactions, it burdens a variety of folks, including older and younger folks, in their travel to get groceries. And so my family and I strongly support penalties on this. And further, we are confused and curious where this process went wrong, that in this case, the restrictive covenant that the College Terrace Center entered into didn't result in either of the two businesses being placed there being successful because of this action with the scaffold potentially. So it seems like something has potentially gone wrong with this process somewhere along the way, and I'd love to hear that addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Derek Gurney, to be followed by Fred Ballen. Welcome.
Thank you. So, councilmembers, please indulge me in a little hypothetical situation. Say the City of Palo Alto has given tens of millions of dollars of value to a developer in exchange for a public benefit. Doesn't really matter what, but say, for example, extra development rights in exchange for, say, leasing land for a new city public pool. The city's recognized that the developer might have an incentive not to provide all of the land, so the city and the developer agreed to a penalty if the developer failed to live up to the agreement. A few years later, the developer's done with the city, hoped wouldn't happen, provided only part of the land, but kept the tens of millions of dollars in value. Further, the developer has sold the land to another party, who then sues the city to get out of the obligation to pay the penalty. So it's not hard to imagine the displeasure, to say the least, that residents and councilmembers would feel in the scenario I've outlined. I hope the council feels a similar sense of displeasure, to say the least, that the owners of the College Terrace Center have taken the tens of millions of dollars in value granted to them, and this is based on my discussions with people in commercial real estate and how much extra square feet they got. Tens of millions of dollars in value granted to them in the form of additional development space while failing to fully provide the public benefit. By my count, the market has been only open 19 and a half out of 31 and 3/4 months, so that means that the full public benefit has provided only 62% of the time that the center's been open. So please consider this in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our final speaker will be Fred Ballen. Welcome.
Thank you. AGB-PACT, i.e. College Terrace Center owners versus City of Palo Alto et al. Good evening. Through citizen investigation and subsequent press coverage, we now know that a hearing officer has reduced the fines that the city concurrently assessed the owners for failure to provide the grocery stores as specified in the PC ordinance for this site. And the city has conceded it will not argue against that, at least within this process. And the owners have filed for dismissal of the balance of the fines, as well as requested an injunction to preclude any additional fines. But we know that sufficient fines work to protect the public benefit. In the case of Edgewood Plaza and its unfilled grocery store public benefit, councilwoman Liz Niss in late 2016 made a motion to, quote, "light a fire under those involved." It worked. Penalties were set to $2,500 a day, and a new store was announced eight months later. It opened and has been a hit. But the lawyers won a court case two months later that nullified over $300,000 in fines. You are contesting that decision. And so we come to the market at College Terrace Center, now not in continuous operation as required, and with a decision on how to pursue the injunction and claim in regard to this development. As at Edgewood Plaza, it is very important that the city also vigorously contests this decision. Without an unambiguous legal pathway to administer and enforce penalties, there is no way to ensure public benefits. That is true in the two situations described here, and will continue to be true under potential future PCs, even if the public benefit is housing, because we have seen violations of public benefits related to BMR housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So now we return to council. If I could please have a motion on these closed session items. Moved by councilmember Niss, seconded by councilmember Philseth. If you would please vote on the board. Thank you, and that passes unanimously. It is now just shy of 6:30. We are scheduled to be in closed session until 7:45, so we will return then or report out if we're going to be a little bit later. Thank you all.
90.1 KZSU Stanford, Vince Larkin coming to you live. Gavel-a-gavel coverage of your Palo Alto City Council, as the Palo Alto City Council now goes into two closed sessions, and we're going to be giving you updates on everything that's going on as we move along this evening. So the, a lot going on in the city, a lot going on nationwide, a lot going on this past week in national and local politics. We're going to hit all those as much as we can. All right, taking a look at what we have right now with the City of Palo Alto and what they're dealing with today, tonight. The council passed proclamations honoring the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto, and recognized the firefighters who responded to the Sonoma and Ventura fires in 2019. And they will then, they're in a closed session now with existing litigation of ABG Pact owners versus the City of Palo Alto, and to consider a claim against the city by Julio Aravalo. Then, in an open session, the council will hold a TAFRA hearing to approve issuance of bonds for the Wilton Court Development and consider the next step for the city auditor's office and schedule its summer break and winter closure for 2020. The meeting begins at 6:00 here, and this closed session just got underway 6:30. They're anticipating they'll be back about 7:45. Sometimes these closed sessions go longer, sometimes they go shorter. So we'll be on this, throughout this. The Board of Education is going to hear a report on the coronavirus, discuss a resolution in support of the Foothill-Danza Community College District, parcel tax and bond measures as well, and a conceptual design and contracts for new buildings at JLS Middle School and Palo Verde Elementary School, among other items. And that meeting is at 6:30 tomorrow night at the district office at 25 Churchill Avenue. The Board of, so the Board of Education, very interesting, the coronavirus, of course. Last week, I was able to get a great researcher, Don Kitahm, about the coronavirus. A lot has happened even since then on the coronavirus, and it has now, the death toll on that has now surpassed the SARS virus, and there's been, there's been some more, it has spread more worldwide, but all eyes are still on China and a couple of cruise ships in which, in Japan, which people are on these cruise ships, and there are Americans on there, so there's more about that we can talk about as well. So it's interesting that the Board of Education is addressing that, a lot of fears. But it didn't stop the Chinese New Year's Parade, who had, it was a beautiful night up there in San Francisco for the Year of the Rat Chinese New Year's Parade, and it was just great, and everybody had a great time. So that didn't stop, while there was a festival here in Palo Alto that it was canceled because of fears, it didn't stop the of fears, it didn't stop the big event in San Francisco from going on as planned. That was Saturday night. All right, getting back to more events, more council meetings and more government meetings here in Palo Alto that you can participate in. The Planning and Transportation Commission will discuss amendments to the standards for wireless communication facilities and discuss the city's annual comprehensive plan progress report. And that meeting is at 6 o'clock on Wednesday, February 12, in the council chambers here at City Hall at 250 Hamilton Avenue. The Historic Resources Board, the board plans to review potential topics for its annual retreat. The meeting will begin 8:30 on Thursday, February 13, in the council chambers at City Hall at 250 Hamilton Avenue. There's the Human Relations Commission. The commission is scheduled to meet at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, February 13, in the community meeting room at City Hall at 250 Hamilton Avenue. The agenda was not available, is not available at this time. So, that's what we have there. And of course, we do not have a broadcast of the Palo Alto City Council next Monday night because it's President's Day, and there is not a follow-up the day after on Tuesday, so there'll be no broadcast on the 17th or 18th because of President's Day. But we are back on the 24th for a 6 o'clock meeting broadcast. There's a study session on community policing, and then, action on Bike Boulevard, and the council ad hoc presentation and discussion regarding boards and commissions. And then, on Monday, March the 2nd, also, yeah, Monday, March the 2nd, we're back for another broadcast of the Palo Alto City Council at 6:00 p.m. It's the public hearing, adoption of a resolution confirming weed abatement and ordering cost of abatement to be a special assessment on the respective properties described therein, the review and acceptance of the report on the Palo Alto History Museum, Roth Building, 300 Homer Avenue, fundraising goals, and the extension of a validation period to complete the option of lease agreements, and discussion and direction to staff regarding the establishment of a pension funding policy and adoption of an ordinance regarding EV charging. And so, that is where we are on Monday, the 2nd. Now, on Wednesday, the 4th, at, I believe it's 7:00 p.m., in the Mitchell Park Library at the El Palo Alto Room, it's this Adrian Fine State of the City address. I don't know whether we're going to be broadcasting that or not. I don't know whether that will be on radio. I do believe it will be on TV. I don't know, on the TV side, is it live or if it's, if they go, if you catch it later, but I know TV will be there for that coverage of Adrian Fine's State of the City address. Already, the council has had their retreat, and where they put together their agendas, their guidelines of what they want to do for the year. A lot of it is set by the mayor, and I'm sure that Adrian Fine will refer to a lot of that in his State of the City address. A lot of mayors and governors doing State of the State, State of the City address, and of course, we just had the State of the Union address by President Trump last week, so we can talk a lot about that. Getting back to the agendas, Policy and Services Committee on February 11 has been canceled, and the Finance Committee on February 18 has also been canceled. And so, that is where we are with, with the, what we had tonight was we had the League of Women Voters being recognized. And of course, when you think of voting, you think of what happened in Iowa. Was a very rough week last week for the Democrats, and a complete meltdown in Iowa, but it has unleashed Mayor Pete Buttigieg, who is quite a personality, who has hit everything hard. He and Bernie Sanders are the frontrunners in New Hampshire, and so, small-town mayor from South Bend, Indiana, and he did all the talk shows yesterday, the Talking Heads, and so, will he be able to stop the Bernie Sanders juggernaut? And Joe Biden having a rough time out there as well. And I think I'm going to have a little, a little help here from one of my producers on how to pronounce the mayor of South Bend.
Buttigieg.
Buttigieg. Well, just call him Mayor Pete. Bu-uh, edge.
Buttigieg.
Buttigieg. Mayor Pete Buttigieg. And he was, he was, he was asked, he was asked by Chris Wallace yesterday on Fox, all kinds of questions about what he wants to do. He wants to get rid of the Electoral College. He wants to decriminalize, of course, legalize pot, decriminalize various drugs, heroin, cocaine, and he offers a new choice. He feels that, basically, when Democrats win, it's a generational change. So, JFK was a generational change, Bill Clinton was a generational change, Obama was a generational change, and he represents a generational change. So, that is what he is offering at this time. So, we'll see what's happening. Also, when you think about voting, as I mentioned, what happened in Iowa was a big setback for the Democrats because they had all this time to prepare for this, and you think about how, what will happen in the next voting? Will there be controversy? Will there be a meltdown? League of Women Voters is here to get everybody on page with voting, and I saw one of our favorite Dennis here going through his packet to vote for the Tuesday in March, that first Tuesday in March. So, we'll see. This is from Richard Alhassen in The Wall Street Journal about how to prevent the next election meltdown. And as the embarrassment in Iowa suggests, the most likely reason that your vote may not be counted in 2020 isn't fraud, suppression, or hacking, it's incompetence. Will your vote be fairly or accurately counted in 2020 election? It's a question on a people's minds. This week's fiasco in Iowa caucuses, and it reminds us of a troubling fact. Nearly two decades after the Florida debacle in the 2000 presidential vote, too many places in the U.S. are still vulnerable to an election meltdown. Such anxieties add to a well-founded concern about the possibility of cyber attacks on our voting system by Russia or other malign actors. What's worse is in today's hyperpolarized, social media-driven environment, such as voting problems, provide sensational grist for conspiracy theories that may further undermine America's confidence in fairness and accuracy in the 2020 elections. Over the past decade, a familiar frame has developed in the contentious debate over voting rules. Republicans express concern about voter fraud and enact laws supposedly intended to combat it. Democrats see these laws as an attempt to suppress Democrat votes, press measures to expand voting access and rights, and worry about cyber attacks intended to help the GOP at the polls. It is an important debate in which I have taken part, but it misses deeper, more urgent reality. Most American voters in 2020 are much more likely to be disenfranchised by the incompetent election administration than by fraud, suppression, or Russian hacking. While most election officials who set the rules and count the votes do a good job, often under serious budget constraints, we cannot ignore the weakest links in the chain, those bureaucrats who increase the chances of a protracted and divisive 2020 election meltdown. Fortunately, it's not too late to take steps to try to fix the problems. Incompetent election administrators exist on both sides of the political aisle. Think of Brenda Snipes, who, an administrator in Broward County, Florida. In 2004, according to the South Florida Sun Sentinel, she failed to mail absentee ballots to 58,000 voters who requested them. In 2016, she left a medical marijuana vote voter initiative off some Broward County ballots. In 2018, she botched the recount of the close U.S. Senate race between the Democrat incumbent, Senator Bill Nelson, and his Republican challenger, Governor Rick Scott. Fox News reported that she wouldn't even tell Mr. Scott's team how many voters, votes were left to count as the counting process votes, a basic requirement of democratic transparency and accountability. The 2018 election was probably Miss Snipes' worst, Miss Snipes' worst performance, but not only did her office miss the deadline for submitting the recount totals by two minutes, that machine recount ended up counting 2,040 fewer ballots than the original tally. Following a required record manual recount, the Broward County Canvacy Board voted to submit the final numbers to the state based on election night totals rather than the totals from the machine recount. Fearings, according to the Miami Herald, that the recount numbers were less accurate than the newer totals would disenfranchise more voters. Miss Snipes admitted that her office had mishandled some ballots and commingled others in piles set aside for the manual recounts. At least 180 ballots were tainted due to clerical error. She had no good explanation for the discrepancies other than the human error. Votes are in the building, Miss Snipes said. I know that sounds trite, it sounds foolish. Some staffers, she added, were not as well-trained as some others. Mr. Scott wound up suing Miss Snipes in the middle of the counting process to find out the number of ballots still outstanding. This is the kind of information that election officials, in the interest of transparency and honesty, can and regularly do announce, but it took a public records lawsuit to get Miss Snipes to do what was required by law. She said, "At the time that the lawsuit against her cast aspirations of my character," adding that she had "served the purpose that I came here for, which was to provide a credible election product for our voters." And Brenda Snipes was the election supervisor of the Florida county, in Florida's Broward County, and was accused of botching the recounts for that 2018 Senate race. And this is just one example of things to look out for, and that was just in 2018. And of course, 2000, everybody remembers 2000, and what happened with candidate Bush and candidate Gore, and the recount, and the hanging chads, and what eventually went to the courts. Eventually went to first the Florida courts, Florida Supreme Court, then it went to the Supreme Court. So, it was quite interesting, in which, at the end of the day, it was George Bush would become president over Al Gore. But that sort of changed the focus on people voting and is your vote count? And then, and so, people have been debating this and looking into this, and with President Trump's election in 2016, with him not winning the popular vote but winning the Electoral College vote and becoming president, this has been animated even more. Getting back to this piece in The Wall Street Journal, getting back now to the other side of the aisle, there's Brian Kemp, now governor of Georgia, but formerly the Secretary of State, the officer responsible for overseeing elections. For years, Georgia has had problems with many security of its voter registration database and cybersecurity. In 2016, as an inspector general's report later revealed, Mr. Kemp basically accused the U.S. Department of Homeland Security of hacking into Georgia's database after the DAS employee used the Secretary of State's website to verify the employment eligibility of someone who wanted to work for the department. In days before the 2018 election, according to the extensive reporting by the Atlanta Journal Constitution, a Georgia voter named Richard Wright, who had a background in software development, used the state's website to verify his voter registration information. He discovered that with a few key scopes, he could download any file on the system server, including private voter information. Mr. Wright brought in the issue of attention of those suing the state over the database, as well as Georgia Democratic Party's election protection team. Democratic Party officials consulted with computer security experts at Georgia Tech, one of whom alerted the National Security Office officials in Washington. When Mr. Kemp's office got wind of the problem, he didn't own up to his office's negligence. Instead, he tried to cover it up by publicly and falsely accusing the Democratic Party of hacking into the state's voter registration database, a basis charge that he posted on the official website three days before the election in which he was running for governor. According to the ProPublica, his office quietly patched holes in the system at the last minute with no official announcement. In his only public statement of the investigation on the eve of the vote, Mr. Kemp told the Journal Constitution that his office has handled the case like any other. Because I can assure you that if I hadn't done anything, the story came out, something that was going on, you'd be going, "Why didn't you act?" When officials like Miss Snipes or Mr. Kemp act incompetently or in bad faith, it creates a strain on the entire system. In a closely contested race, election lawyers naturally look for places with voting problems as opportunities to pick up lost votes or call for some kind of remedy, especially when the partisan election officials are involved. Other parties will look with suspicion on follow-ups and see them as a result of deliberate, self-interested, self-interested manipulation. If history is any guide, and if we have a close race for the president in 2020, everyone's attention will be focused on these weakest links. Given our polarized political environment, we can expect these incompetent election administrations to be accused of cheating. This is what Republicans did with Miss Snipes, conducted the 2018 Florida Senate race with President Trump attacking her on someone who has had a horrible history. Democrats did much of the same in accusing Mr. Kemp of stealing his election as governor. Mr. Kemp piled malfeasance into his misfeasance, but there was no good evidence that his activities swung the governor's race his way, as the fact-checking site of PolitiFact has reported. Because most of the votes at stake are in cities, most are which are controlled by Democrats, we can expect any 2020 election administration problems in cities to lead to cries of voter fraud and criminality by Republicans unhappy with how the vote is being counted. Urban voters get hit with a double whammy. First, they are the victims of poor election administration, sometimes by Democratic officials they have elected, which can lead to long lines or worse, limiting their chances of casting a ballot that will count when they are falsely accused by Republicans of taking part in a unlikely election conspiracy. We saw a preview of what might happen in November in this week's Iowa debacle. Unlike the general election voting in Iowa, which is conducted by government officials, caucuses are party affairs. The caucus presented a logistical challenge for the Democrats because the party had made several changes in the rules and procedures. These included use of a smartphone app for local Democratic officials to vote to headquarters and requirement of these officials report three different sets of results based on how caucus-goers changed their vote during the process. Iowa Democrats never should have launched new technology and rules without much more vetting and rehearsing. Reports say that the app was rolled out too quickly without adequate training for the precinct officials and party officials, turned down federal aid and help from the DHS to assure the cybersecurity of the system. What would help bolster Americans' confidence in 2020 election process and convince them that the foundation of our democracy is intact, the election results would represent the will of the people, and that it would remain solid. If we're thinking about long-term solutions, we might take several steps more important following other advanced democracies such as Australia, Canada, and the UK, and having election administrators nationally by nonpartisan agency with a universal vote registration and a national voter identification number. Many see the highly decentralized nature of our election system as a strength against the attacks, which would be isolated in one place, but it is much more of a weakness. Having different voting machines, different rules, people with wildly varying levels of training, conducting the same election increases, chances of problems, it just increases the chances of problems somewhere else. Unfortunately, our deeply divided country has no appetite right now for redesigning our electoral system or debating the proper mix of federal, state, and local control over elections. Regardless of what we might do in the future, the urgency of the 2020 that is now upon us demands that we take some steps now to remove as many weak links as possible. It is not too late for governors or secretaries of state in some places to suspend or replace election administrators with records of incompetence. It took years of Mrs. Snipes' follow-ups before the Florida governor used his power to attempt to remove her. Mr. Scott tried to remove Miss Snipes when he was governor. She resisted, but ultimately made a deal with Florida's new governor, Governor Ron DeSantos, to resign from office in January 2019 with her dignity and name restored. Governors and secretaries of state aware of election administration problems should not wait wait too long next time. Those who approve new voting equipment need to ensure that it can be operated competently by poll workers and isn't vulnerable to hackers. Systems using hand-marked paper ballots, such as ballots filled out with pencils and put through optical scanning machines, should be considered the gold standard. Newfangled ballot marking devices that use a barcode for tabulating votes should be studied, further to make sure that they are secure and that they are reliable. At very least, states using such machines should pass laws requiring that the human readable names printed on the ballot and not a barcode readable only by machine should be dispositive in the event of a recount. This is currently up for the debate in Georgia, but it shouldn't be. No one should have to trust a computer to tell them what a ballot actually says. There must be some way to audit results to ensure that the vote totals announced by the election officials match voter intent. State officials also need to push local administrators to better train poll workers. In 2016, the vote counting in Detroit was so bad because of poll workers' errors that the city couldn't even conduct a recount of the ballots when it was requested by the Green Party presidential candidate Jill Stein. The snafus led to cries of fraud by the Republicans, even though a later investigation by the Republican Michigan Secretary of State's office found only incompetence, not intentional misconduct. State and local election administrators must act now to assure the security of voter registration and the voting systems. Some state and localities resisted federal help in 2016, and we'll see what kind of cooperation occurs in 2020. Still, given the much more substantial resources and intelligent assets of DHS and other federal agencies, now it is time for the states and the localities to go it alone. Finally, each state should have a contingency plan in place if the election is met with a cyber attack or natural disaster. One of these that keeps coming up at night is the possibility of an attack on the election grid in a Democratic city in a swing state, Detroit in Michigan, Milwaukee in Wisconsin, on Election Day. A recent article in the Journal described Russian hacks into systems that control American infrastructure, such as power grids and dams. These followed successful attacks that began in 2015 by Russian government on Ukraine's electoral grid, which led to a series of electrical outages. Most states don't have laws in place with such an attack in mind. We don't know if an election disrupted in this way would be run again in just one state and whether the parties would contest the election results. Congress and states need to step in with a Plan B. For the American voter system, the 2020 election should be an all-hands-on-deck event. We need the officials who run our systems and those who supervise them to recognize the urgency of the moment. So Brian Kemp oversaw the Georgia's elections while running as the GOP's 2018 candidate for governor, and so he was elected controversially there. And then I also talked about, or the author talked about Brenda Snipes. Solutions include hand-marked paper ballots and giving poll workers better training. And the author of this in the Wall Street Journal, Richard L. Hassan, is calling for like a nonpartisan national oversee body. But he also said that in today's political climate, that is so contentious that that probably will not come to suffice that people who defend the way it's set up now is that if there's corruption in one part of the country or in one city or whatever, it's just isolated in that, and it's not total corruption across the entire country. This was from Mr. Hattonson, has a new book called Election Meltdown: Dirty Tricks, Distrust, and Threat to American Democracy, from the Yale University Press. He is chancellor, professor of law and political science at the University of California at Irvine. All right, Vince Larkin coming to you live as we're getting close to seven o'clock, it's about five to seven right now. Palo Alto City Council is in a closed session, and it's going to go on for a while as I give you important information of what is happening with the council and with local elections and state elections and nationally as well. As I mentioned, the State of the City is coming up on March the 4th, and the president just had his State of the Union address on Tuesday night, and on the eve of his acquittal of the impeachment, which was the following day. So, and the day before, there was the vote, not the Friday before, there was the vote not to use witnesses in the Senate, that the House investigation had, which had witnesses, the Senate voted not to include them. And it was Mitt Romney was the only person, the only Republican, in fact, the first Republican of a party to vote against his president, or really the first member of a party to vote against his own party leader in an impeachment. And so that was interesting, as he stood out there. It was President Trump's State of the Union that had reaction from the Democrats, including the Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi, at the end of his speech tearing up the State of the Union, as there was hails and cheers for four more years in USA, USA, while the Democrats sat in white and listened. And on occasion, they would step up and salute some of the recognitions that the president had, but a lot of the times, they sat and stayed in their chairs. So that was interesting political theater for sure. And then the next day, the vote for acquittal, and then the following day, the president did a victory lap of, and took out a lot of, went after a lot of his political enemies and praised those who defended him. So things are set for a raucous, and all this going on, and then the Iowa debacle, which we just talked about, the Iowa primary, a complete collapse, a very rough, rough week for the Democrats all across the way there. We are on the eve of the New Hampshire primary, which is tomorrow, which is not, it is not a caucus. Many things have happened in New Hampshire historically, and they can, they can sometimes set the tone for who is going to win the nomination. And so they are, it is quite an event, particularly if you live in New Hampshire, you can meet the candidates in the snow, and they have all kinds of events running through to tomorrow night. So everyone is trudging through New Hampshire for this big vote tomorrow. And New Hampshire is always set to, set a tone, and it is the first big contest. The Iowa caucus, of course, is first, but it was a caucus, it's dealt differently. And Joe Biden has ran into trouble where somebody in New Hampshire, a young woman, asked him about his poor performance in it, and he said, have you ever been to a caucus? And he said, you're a lying, sleep-dog-faced pony soldier, which I've never heard. I guess it's referring to a Tyrone power movie back in the 40s or 50s. The young lady just asked a question about his performance, and a lot of people are asking, what is happening to the Joe Biden campaign? Although he's still, President Trump certainly feels he is still targeting him, he feels that he will be the opponent, his opponent. But primaries are interesting in the way they go. There are a lot of people who have trouble early on, but then come back. This is from Aaron Zither in the Wall Street Journal about early contests offer plotlines for primaries. And this is referring, there's a picture of Senator Gary Hart, who acquired momentum after placing second in 1984 Iowa caucus to Vice President then Walter Mondale. And of course, Gary Hart would then run into some personal controversy and would have to pull out, and Walter Mondale would then go on to win the nomination and lose in a landslide to President Ronald Reagan. But it was an interesting, Iowa caucuses and New Hampshire primary have reshaped the race for the presidential nomination, boosting some candidates and sinking others. And there's a whole lot of history in New Hampshire, that's how it is and where it goes. To understand the power of Iowa and New Hampshire, to reshape the presidential field and change the perception of voters who weigh in and later consider the career of Democratic strategist Joe Trippi. In 1984, Joe Trippi guided Walter Mondale to a lopsided victory in the Iowa caucuses, a 32-point margin over his closest competitor. Go on vacation, get some sun, Mr. Trippi recalls being instructed by a confident Mr. Mondale, the former vice president. You'll get your assignments for another state later. The vacation lasted just a few days before Mr. Trippi was called back for the emergency help. Rather than clearing Mr. Mondale's path, Iowa had essentially narrowed an eight-person field into a two-man race, boosting the second-place finisher Gary Hart to victory in New Hampshire as the candidate of a new generation. Mr. Mondale would clinch the nomination but was bedeviled by Mr. Hart through the primaries. In 2004, Iowa stung. Mr. Trippi, again, when he rode high into the Iowa as the chairman of the Howard Dean's campaign, Mr. Trippi found his top polling candidate ended after a surprise victory by then-Senator John Kerry. Mr. Kerry went on to win New Hampshire and then never looked back. Iowa slingshot likely has some, lost some of its power this year because of the vote counting snafu in the Democratic caucus that meant no candidate could claim a clear election night victory or star turns in the media. Still, the state has already introduced narratives that are shaping the Democrats' race. And along with New Hampshire, which votes Tuesday, is likely to play a traditional role of reshaping the candidates' debate field. Among other outcomes, Iowa has confirmed challenges facing former Vice President Joe Biden, who placed fourth in nearly complete caucus results, while elevating a little-known mayor from a mid-sized city, Pete Buttigieg, into one of the top-two finishers. Mayor Buttigieg is a far stronger candidate today in New Hampshire than he was just two days ago before Iowa held its caucuses, said Bill McIntyre, the Republican pollster and veteran of the GOP primary contests. Mike Bloomberg's attempt to cut a path to the nomination without early voting states, if successful, could diminish the power of those states in the future. Mr. Bloomberg, the billionaire former New York City mayor, is skipping the first four contests and running a high-spending campaign elsewhere. Still, Iowa and New Hampshire are likely this year to affect the primary process in two important ways. One role the states can play is to erase the doubts about a candidate. Iowa did that in the 2008 caucuses when Democrats backed Barack Obama and showed that an overwhelming white state would support an African-American candidate for president. The second role the early states play is to create a new frame through which voters see the candidate field, sometimes as a newcomer versus veteran. Several Republican races have set the frame as an establishment-backed candidate facing a populist social conservative. In 2012, Iowa helped the narrow field again, essentially to Mitt Romney, the venture capitalist and former Massachusetts governor, against former Senator Rick, from Pennsylvania, Rick Santorum, who appealed to evangelical Christians and working-class Republicans. If current trends hold, many voters could see this year's Democratic primary as a choice between a centrist and a more ideologically-driven candidate, possibly Mr. Buttigieg against Vermont's Senator Bernie Sanders, one of the most ardent liberals. The two were the top finishers in Iowa. The verdict from Iowa and New Hampshire have influences in part because they arrive, just as the voters nationwide are starting to think through their choices. Mr. McIntyre noted that in a Wall Street Journal NBC News Nashville poll conducted before the Iowa caucus, more than half of the Democratic Party voters said they were less than certain to support their current top choice of the nominee, compared with the 45% who said they had made a final decision about their favored candidate. The findings suggest that voters can be swayed by the results from earliest contests. Absolutely winning creates a different filter, focus, Mr. McIntyre said. The ripple is powerful, especially if it's an unexpected result. The recent developments could alter the role of the earliest states in the process. One is the rise of online fundraising, which Elaine Carmack, a veteran Democratic Party official and strategist, says they amplify the balance that winners can receive from the earliest contests. Even if Mr. Bloomberg wins the nomination while bypassing states that vote first, some candidates are sure to compete in the earlier states to build a name recognition and sway voters in later contests. In a primary, each rate spills upon the next race, says Ms. Carmack. It's being branded as a loser that makes people move and go look for another candidate, people who want to be with the winners. All right, Vince Larkin coming to you live. We're a little bit after the top of the hour, 90.1 FM, KCSU Stanford, giving you gavel-to-gavel highlights of the Palo Alto City Council as they are in a closed session. They had some recognitions earlier of the League of Women Voters, and we heard oral communications, we also heard various, there was also the Palo Alto Firemen were honored for their work in fighting the fires in Sonoma, and we're going to be coming out soon, and I'm just giving you a little bit of preview of the New Hampshire primary, of what took place last week nationally, and then from there, I'll touch on other things, the state senate race, and the local issues that we have, some opinions on the business tax, also State of the Union by President Donald Trump. And in addition, we had a big state senate debate, and we have more state senate profiles on our way as we take you along tonight, on this Monday night. They give you a review, we will not be here next Monday night because of President's Day, but we'll be back on the 24th at six o'clock for another broadcast to finish out the month of February. All right, the Palo Alto City Council, State of the City is coming up on March the 4th. I think Libby Schaaf of Oakland is having her State of the City address. The State of the State address is also, I think Gavin Newsom also did his State of the State address. And Tuesday was the State of the Union by President Trump. There was a lot of controversy about whether that should have been conducted. He had the option to have it later after the impeachment vote, but he gave the go-ahead to, from, to go ahead and do it. And this is from Andrew Restuccia from Washington in the Wall Street Journal, as the president touted the gains in his administration, particularly the economic gains. And he highlighted several people on quite a night for the president and quite a night for the country, as Americans saw his triumph, but also the controversy as well, right in front of our eyes. And it was quite incredible political theater, as he made a very, probably the biggest and important speech of his career as president. It says here, with his anticipated acquittal in the impeachment trial a day away, President Trump used his annual State of the Union address Tuesday to strike an optimistic tone and tout the strong U.S. economy nine months before the election day. In just three short years, we have shattered the mentality of the American decline and we have rejected the downsizing of American destiny, Mr. Trump said in the House chambers. We are moving forward at a pace that was unimaginable just a short time ago, and we are never going back. Mr. Trump entered the House chamber just after 9:00 PM to sustained applause, shaking hands, and pausing to, for a moment, to speak with Chief Justice hands and pausing to, for a moment to speak with Chief Justice John Roberts, who had been presiding over his trial. He handed House Speaker Nancy Pelosi a copy of his remarks but turned away without shaking her hand and she extended, as she extended it, to the president. "Mr. Trump and Mrs. Pelosi haven't spoken in months. Tension over the impeachment have been frayed, as so has their relationship." Moments later, Republicans began chanting "Four More Years." Throughout the speech, Washington's partisanship was on display with Republicans repeatedly jumping to their feet and cheering and the Democrats sitting stone-faced, rising to their feet only rarely. At the end of the address, Ms. Pelosi appeared to tear up the copy of Mr. Trump's speech in half. The president and his speech ticked through a litany of statistics designed to drive home his core message that he is the lead architect of a booming U.S. economy. "If we hadn't had, if we hadn't the reversal of the failed economic policies of the previous administration, the world would now not be witnessing this great economic success," he said. So he also outlined what he wanted to do. There was some things that certain Democrats rose and cheered for. Among them was the senator from Arizona who won a very tight race in a tight red state and she cheered for such things as infrastructure and foreign, some foreign policy successes such as the killing of General Soleimani and, General Soleimani of Iran and Baghdadi of ISIS. Getting back to this coverage of this State of the Union address here, with the economy being touted and also personal stories as well and recognitions, the speech came at a moment when the president is feeling triumphant, according to the people close to him. He spent part of the day Tuesday reveling in the chaos in Iowa over accounting results of the Democratic caucus. It was interesting because last week we were on and we were looking, we were doing the council meeting, it was going late, we were looking for kind of results of Iowa because it was getting later and we're going, well, there's something, it's got to be something. And we were looking, we couldn't get anything from Iowa. Iowa was still in play, it was like 11 o'clock on the West Coast, 10:30 on the West Coast. And then you go home and you find out, you know, the whole Iowa thing is just a total, total mess. And this was something that the president on Tuesday was able to take a lot of, use it politically as well because with Iowa, it was really all on the Democrats. The Republicans had Iowa as well, they didn't use the same system, so they didn't have any problems. So anyway, the, getting back to this piece here, the president told television anchors during an on-off-record lunch in the White House Tuesday afternoon, they plan to address impeachment in more detail later, according to the people familiar with the matter. After Bill Clinton in 1999, he was the second president to deliver a State of the Union address during his impeachment trial. The House and the Senate lawmakers, as well as the Supreme Court justices and presidential candidate, cabinet, attended the address. The top Democratic candidates, including Senator Bernie Sanders of Vermont and Senator Elizabeth Warn of Massachusetts, weren't in the audience. Mr. Sanders and Mrs. Warren were in New Hampshire. For campaign events Tuesday, several House Democrats boycotted the speech. The president previewed his speech in the Tuesday lunch meeting with television anchors at the White House. CNN said it was excluded from the event, but anchors from ABC, NBC, PBS, Fox News and other stations attended. People familiar with the meeting said. Two of the people familiar with nearly a two-hour meeting said the president told the anchors that he isn't bitter about the impeachment. Trump also said war with Iran was closer than you thought. The president's comment on Iran came after one attendee asked him how close the U.S. came to going to war with Iran earlier this year after the U.S. killed the top Iranian commander, military commander-major General Qasem Soleimani. Iran responded with a missile barrage on Iraqi bases housing U.S. and allied military forces that resulted in no deaths, although a caveat to that, it did result in some serious concussions of our personnel. Getting back to the piece here, White House Press Secretary Stephanie Grisham declined to comment on the meeting, noting that it was off-record and the Wall Street Journal didn't attend the event. The theme of the speech, "Great American Comeback," echoed the core message of Mr. Trump's recent remarks at the World Economic Forum in Davos, Switzerland, where the president cast himself as the architect of a booming U.S. economy. Voters consistently list the economy as a top issue and the president advisers view it as central to Mr. Trump's reelection chances. As he did in his remarks in Davos, Mr. Trump touted what he called a "blue-collar boom," part of an effort to highlight how his policies are helping the middle class. And the president also trumpeted the economic effect of a pair of recent trade agreements, the newly-approved U.S.-Mexico-Cana deal and Phase 1 deal with China. Many politicians, and just to step away from that, our, my guest last week, Dr. Don Kepham, we did talk about that Phase 1 deal and he was saying that in the Chinese, in that deal with President Trump, that if in an emergency, they could try to get out of that phase. That's interesting as the coronavirus economically is becoming a bigger, bigger issue and we're, and there's more and more into that, so that was interesting. But certainly both the U.S.-Mexico-Cana deal and Phase 1 deal, big victories for the president. Getting back to his piece here, "Many politicians came and went pledging to change or replace NAFTA, only to absolutely give us nothing. But like many who came before me, I keep my promises," he touted. Mr. Trump also highlighted immigration, an issue that animates his supporters by giving an update on his efforts to build a wall along the border with Mexico. The issue of health care presented Mr. Trump with an opening to criticize his Democratic opponents. The president echoed comments he made in the 2019 address sizing efforts to adopt socialism in our country. "To those watching at home tonight, I want you to know, we will never let socialism destroy American, American health care," Mr. Trump said. Drew Hamel, the Deputy Secretary of Staff for Ms. Pelosi, said Mr. Trump hasn't lived up to his promises to make health care affordable and lower prescription drug prices either. "He has broken both of those promises with his ongoing crusade to repeal protections for the Americans with pre-existing conditions, putting a pharmaceutical executive in charge of drug prices and siding with Big Pharma against the House's game-changing Lower Drug Prices Act now," he said. On foreign policy, Mr. Trump vowed to oust Venezuela leader Nicolas Maduro. The administration has been seeking his removal for more than a year without success. "Maduro is an illegitimate ruler, a tyrant who brutalizes his people, but Maduro's grip of tyranny will be smashed and broken," the president said, pointing to Venezuela's opposition leader Juan Gualdo, who attended the address. Mr. Trump praised conservative talk show host Rush Limbaugh, who attended the speech, and revealed on Monday that he's being treated for advanced lung cancer. First Lady Melania Trump presented him with the Presidential Medal of Freedom during the speech. So that was stuff that went on Tuesday and it continued and it seems that the president now has even better job numbers that were just released yesterday to help his cause. There's also a poll that said that 91% of Americans are happy with their lives and this is all stuff that could, could, could lead to what could be a Trump reelection in 2020. As you look at those strong economic numbers and those personal data, also the, from an economic standpoint, the results are in from the credit card companies. And it said that more people put things on their credit cards than I can ever before. The robust Christmas holiday spending was just intense by Americans, which shows incredible consumer confidence, although it wouldn't help a lot of people who are in debt. You know, Dave Ramsey won't be happy with you if you ever want to get out of debt, but that would be, that is another sign. But Macy's, all these other stores, brick-and-mortar stores are changing, they're adapting, they're doing, they're doing all kinds of things. And Macy's with the announcement they're cutting their stores, including the San Francisco ones. And of course, there's a Macy's right here in Palo Alto that's been here for years and they've reshaping Macy's across the country as Macy's was once certainly the standard for brick-and-mortar places to go. And I went to get a wedding gift, a wedding, I'm going to LA in a few weeks and I went down to Macy's and there was just this, one lady working down there and, and her and I were trying, I was trying to, it was the registry and I'm trying to find this wedding gift and it was her and I and there was nobody else around. It was like she was the only person working there and I'm going, wow. And she was a, she was a great lady and she helped me and we eventually found it, but it's like, man, this is Macy's, this has really changed. Macy's is really, I mean Macy's used to be, man, I've been to Macy's for a long time and I don't do a lot of online stuff, I don't do the Amazon stuff, but it was just, it was different. It was just a different type of Macy's experience that, but yeah, you know, you get the bag and it's still Macy's and, but it's interesting as, as all these things develop. And even though it's a, it's a big booming economy, there are changes, people getting laid off, things happening, that many of it has to do with the boom of Amazon, the Jeff Bezos, juggernaut, everybody ordering things on Amazon and that changing the whole brick-and-mortar experience. But, but if you're working in one of those stores and you get laid off, it's not so nice and you're a hard-working person, so you always want to think, you always want to think about that as well. I'm Vince Larkin, we're working hard, I'm slaving over a microphone here. Rush Limbaugh used to say, or he still says, "I'm slaving over a hot microphone." But it's not so hot, hopefully it's not hot, is one of the things with Roger Inman passing, the thing that would really bother him was when people would get up and they'd tap the microphone. "Is this on? Is this on?" Would drive him crazy, but no hot microphones around here, just going through a lot of hot items as I'm Vince Larkin, this is 90.1 KZSU Stanford, as we are waiting for the Palo Alto City Council to come back on the eve of the New Hampshire primary and on other things that are happening locally and nationally as well. The, a lot of local events as well, a lot of local candidates and there was a recent, a recent candidate debate in the Palo Alto that took place locally and that is the state senate seat of Jerry Hill and Jerry Hill, who I believe is term-limited out. And there are about seven, seven for the senate in the Palo Alto Weekly, seven for the senate, who are running for the senate, meet candidates who want to represent you in Sacramento. And this is election 2020 coverage, senate candidates clash over the housing policies and PG&E's future. And this is from Janati Shaner, who's right here to my left, working hard as well, he's getting some, getting some food because he knows it's going to be a long night and he is everywhere on the election, he is everywhere on the election trail. He's not in New Hampshire and I don't see any snowshoes or cross-country skis, but I'm sure if he got the call, he would head over there and he would find somebody and he would interview them, you know? And, you know, maybe he would do a piece on the New Hampshire, on various city councils in New Hampshire, there's a lot to do. But there's no snow, there was no snow in this debate. It was, it's been cold, it's gotten a little bit warmer. This debate took place February 5th at the Palo Alto Arts Center and it included candidates Josh Becker, Michael Brownwig, Alex Glue, Sally Lieber, Shelley Mosser, Annie Olivia, John Webster, all for their positions on housing, transportation and another hot issue, other hot issues that they were addressing. Some say it's time for a state to take over struggling utilities, others decry too much government control. And that is all about PG&E and seven, the seven candidates vying to succeed. State Senator Jerry Hill in Sacramento tried to set themselves apart from the pack at the Palo Alto Forum Wednesday night as they clashed over housing, transportation and a new proposal to have the state take over the ownership of PG&E. The candidates, who include five Democrats, one Republican and one Libertarian, are all looking to represent the Senate District 13, which stretches from South Pal, San Francisco to Sunnyvale. The two vote-getters in the March 3rd primary will move to a showdown on Election Day in November. The debate, which was sponsored by The Almanac, Palo Alto Weekly and Palo Alto Online, Mountain View Voice, Cal Matters, brought a standing-room-only crowd of about 200 people to the Palo Alto Arts Center, theaters seven candidates, Josh Becker, Michael Brownwig, Alex Glue, Sally Lieber, Shelley Mosser, Annie Oliva, John Webster, to make their respective cases. With the exception of Webster, a Libertarian who believes that government is the problem and likened education spending to socialism, each candidate indicated Wednesday that they believe that the state has an important role to play in solving California's housing and transportation challenges, though they offered different takes on what the role should be. Becker, a Menlo Park entrepreneur and creator of Full Circle Fund, an organization that provides grants to nonprofits, argued that the state should require tech companies to, to match their job growth with new housing. He attributed the Bay Area housing crisis in part to exponential growth of companies like Facebook and Google since the early 2000s. "For big tech companies, for every job created, they should have to fund a unit of housing," Becker said. "It's not going to solve the problem, but it will stop problems from getting worse, which is the first priority." Others called the proposal unrealistic and onerous. Mosser, who serves as Redwood City's Vice Mayor, noted that it costs about $600,000 to create one housing unit. "Requiring businesses to build housing to match their jobs is not sustainable," she said. "A more effective method," she said, "is to rely on the impact fees that cities collect from builders through development agreements." Annie Olivia, a Realtor who serves on the Millbrae City Council, also said she believes Becker's plan is flawed. "I think it's pretty unrealistic to believe that if we're going to be a business-friendly space to come in and spend $600,000 for a housing unit," Oliva said. Brownwig, a former diplomat who has spent 10 years on the Burlingame City Council, offered another ambitious proposal, which borrowed from the state carbon credit market. Under his plan, a developer who created housing would earn credits that he could sell to commercial development. "That type of system," he said, "would create incentives for new housing and ensure that commercial developers are part of the solution without requiring them to spend $600,000 per unit." One area on which most of the candidates found some common ground was the opposition to Senate Bill 50, a proposal that would have required cities to relax height projects in respectively transit-friendly and job-rich areas. The bill failed in the state senate last week. Mosser was the only candidate who said she supported SB 50, whose author Senator Scott Weiner is among her high-profile endorsers. And may I just take a, jump out of Janati's piece, Mayor Fine had a letter to Senator Weiner at the beginning of his administration, supporting SB 50. It drew some controversy here by his colleagues, but it remains a controversial piece as I get back to Janati's piece from the Palo Alto Weekly about the candidates' debate at the state senate on February 5th. "As a local city councilwoman and former school board member, I'm all about local control," Mosser said. In this instance, he really jump-started the conversation and made us all pay attention. Lieber, who served in the state assembly between 2002 and 2008, alluded numerous times throughout the debate of her history of championing progressive causes, including efforts to tackle homelessness and to invest in public transit. While she didn't endorse SB 50, she also credited the bill for sparking critical conversation. "What's important is that it kicked off a discussion that is so far overdue that it's the accountability of cities to not just plan for, but actually see that affordable housing. Extremely low income and low-income housing and supportive housing is actually built," Lieber said. Oliva argued that- Oliva argued that each municipality should be allowed to plan for its own needs and use an example of the residential and commercial developers around the city's transit hub. We do not need to solve the housing crisis by disrupting our single home neighborhoods, Oliva said. Glue, for his part, called SB fifty an ob- abomination. Housing policy, he said, should be handled by city councils and local commissions. We want the state to help us, not control us, Glue said. The candidates largely concurred on the transportation policies, with everyone agreeing that the California High-Speed Rail Project was a massive failure in the way it was executed. The most candidates said they support investing more funding in grade separation or rail crossings and other Caltrain improvements. Mossar said she would like to see better coordination among the Bay Area's twenty-seven transit agencies and use an example of the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey as an agency that cha- that is charged with and assure that making the various transit services working together and working effectively. There was somewhat less consensus on the subject of PG&E and Wiener's proposal to have the state take over the utility. Mossar noted the takeover would not be legal under existing law. While Glue, an engineer who is the lone Republican in the field, said he opposes a public takeover of the utility. Instead, Glue said PG&E should be segmented with different utilities serving the state's rural areas and its high-population hubs. He also suggested that utility is now overregulated. PG&E is a business, Glue said. If they're going to fail, let them fail. Becker and Brownwig and Lieber all said they would support having the state take over the utility. Brownwig said that while he has no problem with the investor-owned utilities in general, he does have a problem with PG&E in particular. Making the company public, he said, would allow the state to take the company's ten percent profit margin and invest it in infrastructure. The current structure isn't working, Brownwig said. After Glue suggested that the reorganization may be a better option, Lieber noted the company has already completed a management takeover. The former executive, she said, jumped off PG&E like rats off a sinking ship the moment their misdeeds came to the public. The state needs to plan publicly-owned renewable and locally-resourced energies, he said. Becker agreed. They disprove the notion of too big to fail, Becker said of PG&E, because they're too big and they're failing. Becker said Brownwig also, uh, fielded questions about large donations that their campaigns have received, in some cases from independent committees. Becker received five hundred thousand from Reid Hoffman, co-founder of LinkedIn, front of an independent committee, while Brownwig received a donation of four hundred and sixty thousand from his mother, Linda Brownwig, also through a committee. Becker said he was worked, he worked with Hoffman at Full Circle Fund, which makes grants to nonprofits, and he has, was shocked by Hoffman's contribution. He also noted, however, that Hoffman is spending two million to oppose President Donald Trump. I don't have any money from tech companies, but I do have money from individuals and they want something we want. They want great schools, great public transportation systems, and they want California to be the national and global leader on climate change, says Becker, who is leading the field in fundraising. Brownwig and Lieber also talked about their decisions to contribute to their own campaigns. Brownwig said he was told by advisors that he would have to spend about three hours per day on the phone trying to get funds to get his message across the broad senate district. Indeed, he opted to participate in house parties in cities throughout the district to talk politics, a decision that required him to rely on his own funds. Brownwig also said that he was incredibly touched by his mother's donation, which came in after the ma- uh, math, after the, uh, uh, loss of losing her partner of forty-five years. The most my mom will ask of me is that I'll come visit more often, Brownwig said, and that will happen anyway. Mossar and Oliva were also asked about the major contributions they have received from teachers' unions and realtors, respectively. Both said that while they are grateful for their donations, they're not coordinating with these donors. I am very humbled and honored that they noticed my work and I'm grateful for their support, Oliva said when asked about the four hundred and nine thousand she had received from the California Association of Realtors. Lieber said he, uh, said she had to use her own money in every campaign she's run. That, she said, has to do with the fact that the most big-money interests aren't keen on donating to her progressive campaign, she said. I think I get the agreement that I'm the most progressive candidate, Lieber said, and that's something that special interests appreciate. Having been in Sacramento, I've seen the emotional toll it takes on you to have to call lobbyists for money when you're voting on a bill that they're lobbying on and they're concerned about. The tensest moment of the night and of the debate came during the discussion of the charter schools when candidates were asked what they would do to make sure these schools are accountable to the taxpayers who fund them. While Mossar, a former Redwood City School Board member, touted recent efforts to require charter schools to have open meetings and make their records accessible to the public, Lieber broadly criticized charter schools, which she said should be ended. I have never voted for any charter school at any point in time, and frankly, that's the difference we have, she said, alluding to Mossar. Mossar responding by noting that Lieber had never served on a school board and as such, didn't have the opportunity to vote for a charter school. Lieber then took a shot at Mossar for supporting Rocketship, a chain of scar- charter schools that has run into trouble over the past year for charter violations relating to inadequate financial reporting. Sometimes you just have to kick the ball downfield and try as hard as you can to block a troubled entity coming from the school district, Lieber said. So that was interesting as, uh, they really got into that and, uh, uh, went after each other in that debate. All right. I'm Vince Larkin. This is KZSU Stanford and, uh, uh, coming to you live from, uh, the Palo Alto City Council as the state senate, uh, had their debate on, uh, and interesting, great coverage there by Janati in the Palo Alto Weekly. Also has a profile of those seven, uh, candidates who are running. It is interesting that only one has served in the assembly, uh, of the seven. And, uh, the others come from, well, various city councils, Burlingame and Millbrae and Redwood City. And, uh, so it's a, uh, a big, big, uh, big senate seat and it'll be interesting to see who gets that and, or which top two will get the nod for the runoff in November. So all politics is local, all politics is state, all politics is national. We've got it all here on KZSU Stanford, ninety point one. You're listening to the gavel, gavel coverage of your Palo Alto City Council coverage. All right, and, uh, we are, uh, past, it is past seven, uh, it were, uh, past seven thirty now and I guess they're supposed to come out around seven forty-five, is that correct? So, uh, we are live here, uh, giving you, um, a whole bunch of things. There's an interesting piece, you know, that the whole debate about charter schools that did come up in the president's state of the Union Address, where he, uh, chastised the, uh, governor of Pennsylvania, Democratic Governor Casey, who comes from a long line of governors in that, that state, who, uh, um, took umbrage with charter schools. There was a young woman and her child, and he, he pushed for that and also getting her a scholarship. And it met to great applause in the chamber by the Republicans and the Democrats sat on that. So that shows that even on a local level, things like charter schools versus public schools, homeschooling, the way education is changing, uh, e- e- even at the very, very highest levels. You'll see that debate in Washington in the State of the Union Address by the president and, uh, and that, that young single mom and, uh, her son. And also, uh, in such things as the, uh, race here with the senate between, uh, two candidates who are going at it pretty strongly. I think that's interesting. Uh, getting back to, uh, of course, the economy, I mentioned the economy is booming and that business of America is business. And, uh, we're here at Palo Alto and we often talk about taxes and business tax and how that comes up. And I thought there was a very interesting op-ed by Judy Kleinberg in the Palo Alto Weekly, along with some others. She is often former mayor, former council member. She has spoken often about, uh, representing Palo Alto business and even in the boom of the economy, uh, uh, and she has warned, she has warned that, uh, uh, she sees a, an economic downturn, uh, towards the end of the year. We'll, we'll see if that happens. Although right now that seems to be not happening, but anything can change economic-wise. And she is always, um, has the back of, of local businesses. And she is the head of the, uh, president of the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce, and she's a former mayor of Palo Alto. Uh, she, uh, has a couple of, um, compadres in this guest opinion piece of the Palo Alto Weekly, uh, Don Costenbauer, who is vice president of tax policy for the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, and Brad Ahician, who is chairman of the Palo Alto Downtown Business and Professional Association and co-owners of the Premier Property Management Incorporated. Kleinberg can be reached at judy@palowaltochamber.com and, uh, uh, Costenbauer can be emailed as well. Uh, and this is their piece at, uh, dcostenbauer@svig.org. Uh, it's an interesting opinion as they, uh, they look to protect local businesses in Palo Alto. And, uh, they're here. Uh, we've got a mall, we've got restaurants, and we do have local businesses as well. And, uh, of course, r- local restaurants are businesses and, uh, uh, they want to protect them. It's an interesting piece they have. Here it is, "The Bay Area Has Affordable, Has An Affordability Crisis With Palo Alto Business Closing Their Doors Or Relocating To More Affordable Markets", as seen in daily news stories and empty storefronts. Yet the cost of doing business in Palo Alto couldn't get more expensive since the city of Palo Alto has been exploring the options to place a business tax on the November twenty twenty ballot. At its meeting on January twenty-seventh, the city council directed city staff to develop a detailed tax proposal based on an employee headcount approach, which in essence will be a tax on jobs in Palo Alto. This tax structure would affect all businesses, but would this, this, uh, proportionally impact smaller businesses that only operate in Palo Alto. By taxing businesses based on their Palo Alto headcount, larger companies may choose not to hire locally in Palo Alto. Small and medium-sized businesses would have an extra financial burden. Our local businesses will invest, invest and add this additional tax cost to their prices. So ultimately, it's going to be Palo Alto residents who'll be adversely affected too. Small businesses cannot pass along additional costs, might have to close their doors and, and their businesses in Palo Alto entirely. And a business tax would impose a costly compliance burden on Palo Alto businesses and significant administrative costs on the city. A reduction in business fatality across all sectors will negatively affect everyone, including residents. Instead of exploring options to tax local businesses, the council should support a stable business environment, which is crucial to our local economy and necessary component to ensuring that everyone has the opportunity to thrive. It's an odd time for the city council to pursue a business tax because the city finances are in very good condition. Palo Alto's long-range forecast that was released at the end of last year indicated the city revenues would rise by seven percent, or nine point eight million, in the upcoming fiscal year. This dramatic growth is due in part to tax revenue generated by businesses. The business community is making substantial contributions to the fiscal health of the city. Stephen Levy, director and senior economist for the Center for Continuing Studies of the California Economy in Palo Alto, reviewed the fiscal impact study prepared by the City Comprehensive Plan and found that most sales tax revenue comes from visitors and businesses, not residents. In twenty fifteen, the study reports forty-eight percent of sales tax revenue comes from visitor spending, forty-one from local employees and business spending, eleven percent from local households. Additionally, Levy wrote, although it was not covered in the fiscal study, it is true that the recent growth in infrastructure funding has come from increase in transient occupancy tax, mainly by businesses and visitors. Businesses' tax could jeopardize, a business tax could jeopardize the significant and consistent source of the revenue. Another concern, and of course, that business occupancy tax, getting away from Judy's piece here, it, you know, that is really, gets you when you, you come to a hotel, when you pay, when you visit a hotel, they, they put that on. So as Palo Alto has events such as, you know, the big game and Stanford Notre Dame game and conventions and big meetings and university seminars and, and all these events on campus and in Palo Alto and in the Silicon Valley, uh, that's where they spend money is in, is, is, uh, is by visitors and that transit occupational tax known as TOT. Uh, and she's arguing that a business tax on top of that is really abusive. Let's get back to the piece. Another concern for Palo Alto's taxpayers is the city pool track revenue of managing taxpayer funds. The city council made the cause to voters in twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen that it needed to pass hotel taxes to fund critical infrastructure upgrades, including new downtown parking garage. In February twenty nineteen, the city council ignored its promise to construct the parking garage and decided not to honor its commitment to the voters. The parking garage would have been a pivotable, uh, force for addressing our community's traffic congestion and parking issues. This history raises questions of whether the funds generated by a new business tax would in fact fund these projects. We have observed, uh, this process that began in the city council in April of twenty nineteen, where most council focus has been on designing a tax rather than on assessing city needs that would justify a specific level of additional business taxes. The city is generating budget surpluses due to a strong local economy and significant taxes already in place. In the process, the city council has authorized additional spending, up to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand and a hundred and twenty-five dollars, to conduct polling and outreach in order to design a business tax system that is most likely to be acceptable to enough voters to pass, yet without identifying the needs it is trying to meet. If the council had started with focus on opportunities to implore the business climate in Palo Alto, there would be a much better chance of gaining support of the business community and voters as well. Ultimately, the city council moves forward with placing the tax on the ballot. The voters will have the chance to weigh in. This is not the first time the council has pursued a similar jobs tax. In two thousand nine, Palo Alto's voters overwhelmingly rejected a similar measure. They would have taxed companies based on employee headcounts. The council should take note that the election results and realize that the Palo Alto voters do not want to burden the businesses in their city with higher costs, with, only to be passed along and passed along to them. Instead of rushing to a place of business tax on the ballot, the city council should invest its time in working with diverse stockholders or alternatives, uh, to, to strengthen our local community by supporting and retaining our local businesses, by working with those local stakeholders and what they can do. We strongly urge the city council to forego placing a business tax on the November twenty twenty ballot. Our community deserves a solution that works for everyone, not just city hall. So, I am passionate guest opinion about the twenty twenty election by Judy Kleinberg and two of her compadres as the Chamber of Palo Alto, Chamber of Commerce of the city of Palo Alto. I'm Vince Larkin. We're live gavel to gavel coverage of the Palo Alto City Council here. And, uh, we've covered a lot of stuff tonight, uh, and, uh, there's more, more to cover on the eve of the New Hampshire primary, uh, as the big race for the state senate moves along. Uh, seven for the seven senate, it says, uh, not seven brides for seven maidens, but seven people for the state senate representing this district. Um, there is more. Last week, I did talk, we had a great guest on, Dr. Don Kit-Ham from the University of California, uh, PhD, who talked about the coronavirus. Since then, things have, uh, as we predicted, it would be more and more in the news. Uh, this is, uh, a piece by Sue Gremmon and Jamie Padahino of the Palo Alto Weekly, "Two Cases Of Coronavirus Confirmed In The County". And, uh, Stanford University on February third, Kevin Chen wears a mask. He's wearing a mask. He has a slight cold and said he doesn't want to put other people at risk of catching it. And one of the things we talked about with Dr. Kit-Ham was wearing a mask. Should you wear a mask and all that? And, uh, recently China has been under, uh, more scrutiny as the whistleblower. Uh, one of the whistleblowers in China, who, Dr. Lee, passed away from the One of the whistleblowers in China, who Dr. Lee passed away from the virus, and many people are viewing him as a hero, and many people concerned that this was going on prior to when we all got the news of it, of the Wuhan situation. So getting back to this piece, the widespread coronavirus has infected tens of thousands of people around the world and killed 565, has reached Santa Clara County, where two people have tested positive for the disease, according to the county's public health department. Coronavirus, better known as a novel coronavirus, is a respiratory illness that has been reportedly linked in seafood and animal market in Wuhan, China, has since been passed between people, according to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention of the CDC. Symptoms of coronavirus include fever, cough, shortness of breath that appears two to 14 days after the exposure. It can lead to pneumonia and in some infections, death. County public leaders alerted the public to the first case on January 31 and the second on February 2. The cases don't appear to be related. County Public Health Director Dr. Sarah Cody said during a press conference on Friday, January 31, that in the first case, a man from China on January 24 at the Manetta-San Jose International Airport immediately isolated himself at home. He became ill after his return. He has been traveling in China and has been to Wuhan and Shanghai, Cody said. The man only left his home twice to seek medical attention at the local medical clinic and at the hospital where he received outpatient care. Cody declined to identify the medical facilities or what city he lives in. He was never sick enough to require hospitalization, she added. The man had a little contact with others during his trip back to the U.S., potentially airline employees, medical center staff, and household members. Cody said county health officials are working to monitor them while they remain in self-isolation for 14 days. We're quite lucky in this case that the list of contacts is very short, she said. The second case was reported on Sunday. A woman came to the county from Wuhan on January 23 to visit family and stayed at the home since her arrival, with the exception of two occasions when she sought outpatient medical care, public health staff said. Her family members who have been isolated and have received food and other necessities through the public health department. She has been highly regularly monitored and was never sick enough to be hospitalized, the department stated in a press release. There have been two cases of human-to-human transmission of the disease in the U.S., according to multiple media outlets, in which a report total of 12 cases in the country. One case was recently found to have been transmitted in Illinois between spouses and another between spouses in San Bernardino County, which is south of Gilroy. Based on what we know today, the risk to the general public remains low, Cody said in a press release on Sunday. A second case is not expected. With our large population and the amount to travel to China, for both personal and business reasons, we will likely see more cases, including close contacts to other cases. When people are required to be in isolation, they can be watched in one or two ways, by family members or, if there is one, through public resources, she said. Cody stressed that there is much still unknown about the strain of the coronavirus. Hence, it is called novel. She warned the public to take precautions, to stay at home if they are ill, and to seek medical attention. Everyone should be vaccinated for the flu, which is still circulating and has similar symptoms to the novel coronavirus. We know we have 36,000 deaths from influenza in the United States every year, she said. It's far more likely for people to be sickened by the flu, she added. In January, the public health department activated its emergency operations center to provide regular communications to the public and healthcare provisions and handle reports of potential novel coronavirus infections. On Tuesday, the county public health department announced five workers from Good Samaritan Hospital in San Jose were sent home and were restricted to stay home until February 11, after it was determined if they were exposed to the coronavirus. Meanwhile, Stanford University is restricting all travel to China to prevent a spread of the coronavirus and is requiring anyone who has traveled to the country to quarantine themselves for 14 days before they attend classes or on-campus activities. The restrictions and guarantees... ...or dean and then forwarded to the provost's office.
It is 7:58. Council has returned from two closed-session items with no reportable action. We're about 15 minutes behind schedule, but no worries. Our next item is agenda changes, additions, and deletions. I'll just note the one thing we mentioned earlier. Item number two was removed tonight as we're unable to get our fire department officers here. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And for oral communications, I see two speakers. As a reminder, oral communications is to address the council and community for items which are not on the agenda tonight. Our first speaker is Liz Gardner. You'll each have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Liz Gardner, and I live at Mayfield Place. It's a low-income, affordable housing complex on El Camino Real. I just wanted to throw my support for affordable housing for the resident and the normal wage earner in this community. The city providing equitable housing choices gives families like myself, a single parent in a head of household, a fighting chance to succeed in a world where 98% of the residents here are the, what I'd say, the haves. I personally understand the property bubble that California has benefited from and the misfortune of not having grown up as the fortunate. I was a native of the Bay Area, but I was unfortunate if I wasn't a child where my family owned a home. Instead, at nine years of age, my first family was thrown into poverty with no property stocks. There was no heirlooms or cash in which to fall back on. So within a year, we became homeless in a Marin County State Park. So and even later than that, in the late 70s, Proposition 13, the passage of Proposition 13, furthered my my family's path downward. So today, I feel lucky to live in Palo Alto in affordable housing, yet I'm here to speak for all those people out there who are living not even paycheck to paycheck, I'd say one disaster to the next before being homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jason Oberman. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I also wanted to provide, I had sent a letter to the mayor and the council, so I wanted to provide copies of it for for them if if they're interested. Good evening, Mayor Fine and and council members. My name is Jason Oberman, and I'm a representative of the ownership from 2100 El Camino and 501 Oxford, which is College Terrace Center. I'm not speaking on any of tonight's agenda items, but wanted to provide this this letter that we sent to try and provide some of the facts and information about about the property and most recently about a vacancy now at the property. The closure, the, so we had Corey's Market, which we were originally quite excited about as having a tenant to fill the public benefit for for the community and for the project. And ultimately, we're saddened that it is vacant, and there's a void right now, and we're eager to find an alternative tenant. We think we'll do a hopefully better job at being able to be successful in this space for the long for the long term. We want you to know that we're committed to trying to lease up the space for this public benefit. We've already engaged a leasing team, a retail leasing team, who has a lot of success in the Palo Alto market, to try and find a replacement tenant. And in terms of kind of what what happened at the property, within months of us purchasing the property, we very quickly found Corey's Market to lease the space. They signed a 15-year lease obligation for the space. And as part of that, what they were aware of, it was because they they required it of us as the landlord to do improvements to the property, things that they were concerned about. They were concerned about their identity, making sure that the space stood out. They wanted it to be very visible. And there were other improvements as well. So we got approval for those for those improvements and executed upon them. They operated for about six months, and within a couple of months, were coming to us asking for assistance. And we tried working with them for a while, but after about a year of them paying nothing to to the landlord, as well as us having evidence of of lack of payment to others, we grew increasingly concerned. We still honored what our commitment was, which we had to do in the lease, which are these improvements, which we thought were the right thing for the project, for the long-term success of the project, for the visibility that's needed, for making it more visible and easier to see the parking, as well as to be able to see inside of the store. A lot of those things are detailed in the letter, and we're happy to provide that to whoever it needs that. There isn't that much more that we can go into great detail about, given that there are issues between the landlord and tenant, given the situation of having a long-term lease, and and that's ultimately what we wanted to raise and let the community know, the college terrace community, the Palo Alto community, that we're focused on trying to bring in a new tenant there, and we're eager to do it, to come up with solutions that that are the best tenant that that can succeed and fulfill what we think the project needs and the community really wants. So we're looking forward to giving you an update at some point in time when we have, you know, more clear news on what the leasing prospects look like, but we want you to be aware of of where things stand today and where we're going with this in the future.
Thank you very much. So that concludes oral communications. Our next item is item number five, minutes approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cormac, and I'll second it. And if you would please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we've consent calendar items six through nine.
I'll move consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac, seconded by the Vice Mayor. We have a number of speakers on these items, and council members, if you have any comments or votes, please hit your lights. Let's go to the public. We have Melanie Grandell, Fred Ballen, and Ken Joy, two of you on item number nine, one on item number seven. You'll each have three minutes. Melanie Grandell, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. I have mentioned that I have moved to College Terrace because I, the market on the corner was very important to me. I also want to state that I have lived previously on College Terrace and in the time of the J.J. and F. market. I was an active participant in the Jubilee, 50-year Jubilee of J.J. and F. It was in the center of the neighborhood and a very, very appreciated and useful market. When I returned, I saw the College Terrace building developed and in torturous history of at least five years of building. I learned that there was a public benefit for a grocery store, something like J.J. and F. However, when I have seen Corey's Market open, I was assured by Corey's Market that the landlord was going to install the proper fittings for the market. He had asked urgently for the Corey's to come in and do a soft opening. While the signage was not up, while the main doors didn't open, and the elevator had trouble, this was promised to be fixed in six weeks, it has never been fixed. And after four months, the landlord wrapped the market in scaffolding and shrouding. It is not possible for a market to succeed and have a grand opening. The grand opening with tables and foot bins and a fully stocked market where everything functions would be the benefit that College Terrace hopes for. And I hope that this can be implemented and we get, as college terrace residents, will have the benefit of the market and a center for the neighborhood like J.J. and F. was. It can be achieved when the building is properly outfitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fred Ballen, speaking on agenda item nine. Welcome.
Thank you. So Mr. Oberman shows up tonight while he is in the midst of suing the city and filing an injunction against the city and has already had the fines reduced because of a technical error by the city. So you will increase the fines tonight to what was in the PC, but what about the money over $200,000 that has not been collected? Well, here is the restrictive covenant that was signed on December 22, 2014, a few days after the PC was approved. In consideration of the above listed titles and the mutual covenants, terms, conditions, and restrictions contained herein, owner hereby declares as follows. Operation during the term of this restrictive covenant, a grocery store within an area of at least 8,000 square feet shall be in continuous operation within College Terrace Center for the useful life of the improvement specified in the PC ordinance. Penalty, the city shall have the right to levy a penalty against the owner or any successor owner of the property, as the case may be, in the amount of $2,000 for each day after the grace period that the grocery store is not in operation. Term, this restrictive covenant shall be in effect on the date on which it is recorded and shall continue in full force until the earlier of one termination of the restrictive covenant by written agreement of owner or its successor, or a sign as applicable, and city, or two, the operative provisions of the PC ordinance are no longer in full effect. Signed, Brian Spears, the manager of College Terrace LLC, and James Keegan, city manager. You have the opportunity to reclaim the lost money by asking for it under the restrictive covenant. And if it is not handed over, you can take that to civil court and get the money that has been lost by the administrative error. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ken Joy, speaking on item number seven.
Thank you for the opportunity. I come here tonight as a member of the Emergency Services Volunteer Corps in support of a movement to extend the contract to fit the OES's radio system. I think all of us would probably agree that having radios for that department working in time of emergency would be a high priority. I fail to understand how this could be controversial. Something I saw on Nextdoor suggested it may be. I urge you strongly to approve this without any hesitation. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Herb Borack, speaking to item number nine.
Hi, Mayor Fine and council members. I'm concerned that the proposal before you would be just like the ordinances you approved for this planned community zone and the one for Edred Plaza and, I guess, others. And that is, you knew or should have known that it would fail, but you went ahead anyway. And conditions are established in it where the property owner can claim that you don't have an ability to enforce the restrictions and covenants of the agreement. But just as in those situations, you know, you say, well, we just have to have a market, and some people who came here said they wanted a market. And boy, they felt good, because you voted for something they wanted, and then you go away. And here again, it looks like you're voting for something that people want, but I'm not convinced that doing this after the fact would work. I believe it is better to go back to what I've previously said at another meeting, which is... is that I've been unable to find an approval from the county Department of Environmental Health that this is a legal operation, the grocery store, which means every day that it has existed, it hasn't been a grocery within the definitions of the law. And so whether or not raising the fine at this point will stand the test in court, I think you're in a better position to say there has never been a grocery. Just opening up a door and stocking shelves and calling it a soft opening, if you don't have the proper approvals, I don't believe meets the letter or intent of the requirements of the planned community zone. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our consent calendar public comment. We have a motion by Councilmember Cormac, seconded by the Vice Mayor. If you would please vote on the consent calendar. Thank you. And that passes unanimously. We now move on to our action calendar. Oh, sorry. Thank you. City Manager comments?
Yep, that's me. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A few items just to provide some info for the council and the public. First off, on the intergovernmental front, want to note that we issued a couple of letters of support over the last week or so. First, on Senate Bill 795 by Senator Bell regarding property tax contributions to build housing. Last week, the city submitted a letter of support on this bill, which allows local governments to reduce contributions of local property tax revenues to schools to build housing and related infrastructure. Specifically, funding can be used for affordable housing, transit-oriented development, infill development, revitalizing and restoring neighborhoods, and/or planning for projects that mitigate the effect of climate change. SB 795 also ensures that schools receive backfill funding from the state's general fund to make up for loss in property taxes. The other legislative item is to the County Board of Supervisors, actually will be considered tomorrow, regarding the referral from Supervisor Semidion to update the Stanford Community Plan and 1985 land use policies. This was a letter of support sent today to the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors in advance of tomorrow's board meeting to accept or to consider this administrative referral. The work supports the long-expressed need of Palo Alto and surrounding jurisdictions to preserve open space, extend the academic growth boundary with restrictions, and prepare a municipal services study. In addition, these updates are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and we appreciate the county's interest in ensuring these guiding documents are up to date. Let's see, a couple of other items of update. Our potential business tax ballot measure outreach is set to begin soon. Staff is finalizing follow-up to the council's direction from January 27 with a business engagement survey that's been drafted and expected to be sent out to businesses this week. Staff is analyzing several potential scenarios, including definitions of small business, and researching resources for tax implementation and administration, working with our consultant, FM3, also on a second role, a round of polling questions based on the council direction and upcoming outcomes of the scenario analysis. We expect to finalize the scenarios and return to council in March. Note that, you may have heard about this, the City of Palo Alto named one of seven jurisdictions to receive a partnership for the Bay's Future Challenge Grant. This is a program that provides the city with a mid-career fellow for a period of two years that will help the city develop previously council-directed tenant protection policies. City will also be partnering with SV at Home as a part of this initiative. And last piece of news, just a report that I and your Assistant City Manager, Monique Lacoste, were able to represent Palo Alto at the annual League of California Cities City Managers Conference last week in Napa. There were more than 500 participants at this conference, and we engaged in updates on issues such as community resilience strategies, workforce retention and recruitment, CalPERS, and independent contractor issues. I also moderated a panel on council-manager relations, as well as conducted organizational business for the league and CalICMA, which is the state affiliate of the International City-County Management Association. Then just a few calendar notes for upcoming meetings and events. First, the XCAP, the Rail Expanded Community Advisory Panel, will be meeting this Wednesday at the Community Meeting Room here in City Hall, continuing the work on evaluation of rail grade separation alternatives. This will be Wednesday, February 12, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. There is a Resource Housing Services Fair that is focused on efforts by the Palo Alto Homeless Services Committee, led by our Community Services Department Human Services Staff, as a resource fair for low-income and unhoused members of the community, will be held at the Opportunity Services Center, 33 Encina Avenue, on Friday, February 14, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Anyone interested in supporting this effort should contact Minder, excuse me, Minka Van Der Swaag at (650) 463-4953. We have Art, Code Art II application deadline also coming up this Friday, February 14, for artists, designers, tinkerers, inventors, and innovative thinkers. The Code Art II Festival is returning to Palo Alto in October, and the deadline to submit conceptual proposals for the urban interventions has been extended to February 14. More information on this is available at cityofpaloalto.org-publicart, one word. And let's see, two other things. Our rail crossings or train crossings town halls are scheduled later this month, two of them, Thursday, February 20 and Thursday, February 27, both 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Continuing our community conversations on rail crossings. First to be held at Mitchell Park Community Center with a general presentation and update on the discussion since the last community-wide meeting last November. And in addition, city will host a second town hall focused on the Charleston Meadow Crossing at the Palo Alto Elks Lodge on El Camino Real on February 27. For more information, is connectingpaloalto.com. And finally, Project Safety Net will be conducting culturally tailored training on Wednesday, February 26, from 3:30 to 6:30 p.m. in conjunction with Palo Alto University and Santa Clara County Suicide Prevention Program to lead culturally tailored suicide prevention training at Culberly Community Center, Room H1. Project Safety Net will facilitate a debrief and conversation on the role of culture from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., with dinner provided. Each training is limited to 35 participants, and as such, RSVP is required. Please contact Project Safety Net for more information at www.psnpaloalto, all one word, p s n palo alto dot com. That concludes my updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So now we move on to the action calendar. Item number 10, this is a TEFRA hearing regarding conduit financing for Palo Alto Housing Corporation on behalf of the Wilton Court Project. The recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing under the requirements of the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982 and the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, and adopt a resolution, Attachment A, approving the issuance of the bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the benefit of Wilton ECR LP. Does staff have a presentation?
Staff doesn't have a presentation. Thank you, Mayor Fine. You kind of covered most of my topics for me, so I'll make it extremely truncated. Good evening. My name is Taryn Narine. I'm the manager of Treasury Debt and Investments. As you stated, staff is requesting you to open a public TEFRA hearing for the Palo Alto Housing Corporation. This will be for Wilton Court tax exempt financing, which will be used for the acquisition, development, construction, and equipping of the 59-unit multifamily rental housing for low-income households. There is no financial impact or obligation to the city from the council's approval of this bond issuance. I have Randy Suda, who is the president/CEO of the Palo Alto Housing Community, and Travis Cooper, representative of the California Municipal Finance Authority, are also present and available to address any project financing and related questions.
Thank you very much. So let's open the public hearing, and I see we have one public speaker, Liz Gardner. You'll have three minutes, and welcome.
Thank you, Liz Gardner, again, 2500 El Camino Real. You've heard a little bit of my personal story and how I got here. I'm here also today to ask the city regarding the Wilton Court 59-unit family housing, how the city is going to handle the waitlist. I know there's hundreds of people floundering, either floundering or flourishing, depending on, you know, who you talk to and how long you've been on the waitlist for Palo Alto Housing. So as a city, I would just ask the question, you know, how would somebody like myself and my family apply to Wilton Court? I spoke earlier of being grateful that I'm actually housed. However, we've actually overutilized our 700-square-foot apartment. I have two teen boys, and they're quite rambunctious, and we just, I would like to have a choice of where I move in Palo Alto. At the same time, I was hoping that the City of Palo Alto would include or have a relationship with the other affordable housing entities, which include things like Mid Peninsula Housing, Bridge Housing, so that if a resident owner or an employee or both want to apply to a resident affordable housing, they would just have to go to one list in the city and join that list and keep up on that list, rather than going to eight different properties. The other, on a different note, I was really hoping that sustainability-wise with Wilton Court, that there would be plenty of, because we're lowering the type of parking car, auto, trying to reduce single occupancy vehicles, that there is plenty of covered, efficient bike lockups that for all members, all residents, all family members, so that there's an ease of access to get in and out of Wilton Court. And of course, we know about, you know, all the other efficiencies, such as solar and so forth. Looking forward to other affordable housing coming online. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so with that, we will close the public hearing at 8:25, and I see a light from the Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution to approve the issuance of bonds for the Wilton Court Project.
Thank you. So there's a motion, assuming the staff motion from the Vice Mayor.
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Do you want to speak to your motion or second? All right. Any comments, questions? If you would please vote on the board. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you all for showing up. Next up is item 11. We are just a few minutes ahead of schedule, which is great. This is a council-appointed officers committee recommendation that the council discuss and accept a report and provide direction on next steps. This is continued from earlier in the month. I assume there's no staff presentation here. So let's go to members of the public, and then we'll come back to council. And I'm probably going to start with our council-appointed officers committee from last year. So I see three speakers so far. You'll each have three minutes. Sharon Erickson, our former city auditor. Welcome.
Good evening. Tonight, you're being asked to consider the future of the city auditor's office. I had the privilege of serving as your city auditor from 2001 to 2008, and I'm here tonight to respectfully recommend that the appropriate next step is to hire a new city auditor. Palo Alto voters created the Independent Office of the City Auditor in 1983 to serve as an internal watchdog over city operations. For the last 37 years, the office has provided council members and the public with independent objective performance audits, audits of the efficiency and effectiveness of city services. Altogether, I maintain it's been an extraordinary body of work, covering everything from libraries to permitting to utility risk management to employee overtime. The future of the office has been in dispute since a May 2018 Finance Committee vote, later rescinded, to eliminate five of the six positions in the office and outsource all audit work. You have before you tonight a consultant report with recommended changes to the audit function. I maintain there are flaws in the report and analysis, but as a performance auditor with 30 years of experience auditing the cities of Palo Alto and San Jose, let me say first that there are always ways to improve performance, yes, even in the city auditor's office. And several of the consultant's recommendations fall into that category. However, the consultant's recommended changes to the reporting structure of the office are not, in my opinion, in conformance with the city charter, the municipal code, and are totally unnecessary to the proper functioning of the office. First, the city charter specifically provides that the offices of the city manager and auditor may not be combined. And second, the municipal code and good business practices already require that the city auditor confer with the city manager and seek the advice of the city attorney before submitting his or her annual audit plan. Now, you've received letters from both the Institute of Internal Auditors and the Association of Local Government Auditors, expressing their concern that the proposed changes would undermine the dependence of the city auditor, negatively impacting the public's interest and weakening its independence under government auditing standards. As outlined in the city charter, your responsibilities include appointment of a city auditor, a position that's been vacant for the last year. I'm here tonight to recommend you accept the consultant's report, but clarified that your potential acceptance of recommendation number four is not intended to weaken the municipal code requirement, oops, may I finish?
Please.
That the city auditor be a certified public accountant or a certified internal auditor. And most importantly, I'm here to urge you to reject recommendations one and five to restructure the office and outsource portions of its work. Instead, what would be helpful tonight is for you to express your strong support for the office of the city auditor, an office that was created by the voters to ensure honest, open, and effective city government, and move forward to hire a new city auditor without delay. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks for the extra time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Herb Borack, to be followed by Bob Moss.
Mayor Fine and councilmembers, this whole process that has gotten the council to this point seems that it started with an answer that someone wants and then created a report to support that answer. And I recall seeing even a copy of the existing charter language in the materials before you. I have also requested, when this was last on your agenda on January 21, and submitted a copy of my request at that time, which was reproduced in the agenda packet distributed later that week, that you obtain historical information that led to the charter amendment to create the auditor, and that you continue your discussion until you get that, and the public gets it, and the press gets it, on a timely basis, to be able to participate in the discussion on these recommendations. Timely basis means the, what the habit and custom has been, to include all that material in an agenda packet that contains that item, distribute it at least 11 days before the meeting, rather than showing up the last-minute at places when no one has the time to read any of it. The actions that have been taken, or rather, lack of action by not appointing an auditor and by trying to reduce the positions in the budget, is tantamount to making a charter amendment, which only the voters can do. Do you want to have a charter amendment on the ballot to accomplish the objectives that are recommended on the same ballot, when you're asking? to accomplish the objectives that are recommended on the same ballot when you're asking the voters to approve a tax to pay for additional infrastructure to enable the companies that have overdeveloped Palo Alto to overdevelop it even more? You may recall that what the auditor does according to the charter, if you had the opportunity to read it, is to provide financial and operating data and conduct internal audit to the city's financial transactions and procedures. Do you want that record before you, that you don't want the auditor to do that, at the same time that the voters will be voting on a proposal to tax somebody for more money? And continuing the path that you've taken and attempting to do all these things without making a charter amendment would give you the same result, because that history will be available to every voter. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker on this item is Mr. Bob Moss. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Fine and councilmembers. I agree with the comments made by especially Sharon Erickson and also Herb Borack. For more than three decades, we've had a city auditor who is appointed by the city council and is responsive and responsible to the community and the council. While the auditor can discuss things with the city manager, it is completely inappropriate to have the auditor reporting to the city manager, because in the process of auditing, it's not uncommon for the auditor to identify problems which have arisen under the city manager's office. And it's inappropriate to put the auditor in a position where the city manager can suppress those findings and keep the public and the council unaware of problems which might embarrass the city manager. We have a budget which has a number of items and issues that have the possibility of creating problems and loss of public funds. And so it's essential that we have an independent auditor who evaluates the use of those funds and how they can, are consistent with both the city charter and directions by the city manager, and, most important, the city council. I think if you want to keep the, let's say, the community aware of the fact that you're really involved and really concerned with keeping the city operating efficiently and completely honestly, you will have an independent city auditor and not follow the recommendations in the staff report, especially recommendations one and four, but adopt the normal policy of the council selecting and managing and being responsible for an independent city auditor. We need that independence.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. So we now return to council. The public discussion is closed. Just framing this up pretty quickly, I think reading the first page of the council report is quite helpful. Our last city auditor retired in February of 2019 after five years of service, and the council authorized two scopes of work. One is to find somebody to assist with the continuity of operations and work product in the city auditor's office, and the second piece was conducting a review of internal auditing practices in the public sector and in Palo Alto. So we had an interim auditor for roughly a year. We also had an external report done, which is included in this packet. And at, towards the end of last year, council-appointed officers committee recommended that the council accept the report with a special emphasis on recommendations five and eight, and that's what comes to us here tonight. So the range of our discussion can be this report and providing direction to the council or to the CAO committee on next steps. I thought it may be helpful to first go to last year's members of the council-appointed officers committee, former Mayor Phil Seth, Councilmember Niss, and Councilmember DuBois, if you all maybe want to chime in with a bit of background and your thoughts. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, yeah, so it's, you know, as the mayor mentioned, you know, with Harriet's retirement, you know, we sort of took, took the opportunity to kind of look at the whole operation. And as mentioned, we considered a, we commissioned a survey basically of other agencies and practices, and the primary focus was sort of, you know, how do other agencies do this, and is there anything we ought to learn? And that was the genesis of the Kevin Harper Report, which the CAO committee, council-appointed officers committee, reviewed in December and referred to council this evening. The report covers a number of areas and includes a number of recommendations that, suggestions for the council to consider. Since they're kind of scattered all the way through this 15-page document, there's a summary of them on page 135, if anybody's looking for those. We, I, we'll get to that in a second, but first, a couple of things there seems to have been some confusion over. We got a small number of letters from the public and also from some of the national auditing professional associations that I, I'd take a minute. First of all, two things really. One is there's sort of this notion that we might have the auditor function report to the city manager instead of the city council. You know, that's not exactly what the report says, and in any case, it can't really happen because of the charter. And if anybody, even if anybody wanted to, but it sort of defeats the whole purpose of an independent auditor if you did that. And so the CAO committee at the December meeting, we did not even discuss such a possibility, right? So I think there's not any momentum that I have seen to do something like that. We didn't, we didn't discuss any changes to the reporting structure. The second issue had to do with the notion of two different industry standards for how audits are done. As a couple people have noted, the city chose one of those, the quote-unquote Yellow Book, a few years ago. The Harper Report talks about the IIA, but mostly in broad operational guidelines such as how to ensure independence and the proper role of the auditing itself, not about the specifics of different audit standards. And certainly, the CAO committee did not discuss changing audit standards of Yellow Book versus IIA, and there's not, there's nothing like that in the report either. So, so those two things we didn't really address. What did jump out at me in the report, and which the CAO did discuss in December, was really three things that came out of the report. The first was the cost, obviously, where we seem to be at the high end of the range according to the, according to the study. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. The second was the work focus, what kinds of things the office is actually working on, which I think really is fundamentally a council issue, because the council approves the audit plan. But the audit function, and the report goes into this in some detail, is supposed to be an independent verification that the city's internal controls are keeping us out of trouble in areas where there's significant risk to the city, and notably, you know, where there's a lot of public money involved, or where there's public safety involved. And that's a critical, a critical independent function. Yet, if you actually look at the list of stuff that we've done over the last three years, it's pretty clear that a substantial amount of it doesn't really fall into that category. For example, we've done a lot of work on, we've done some work on the ERP databases. You know, it's, that's probably a good thing to do, but it's probably not high-risk to the city if the data's, you know, not clean in our databases. And arguably, that could have been done, it's kind of an IT function, right? Does it really need a, an audit? Another example was the code enforcement audit, right, which we did, we audited the code enforcement. Not that it wasn't a good study, but, I mean, the reality is, everybody knows the problem in code enforcement is it's really short-staffed, and you don't really need a $417,000 audit study to tell you that, right? And so a lot of this looks to me like you were using the office more like sort of a pool of consulting resource for things that come up, as opposed to protecting the city from risk and the failure of internal controls. And the implication of that is, if we're putting the effort into consulting work, you know, maybe, maybe there's a need for that, right? But that may, maybe proper auditing work isn't, we're not getting enough of it done. And again, I think that's more of a council issue really, because the council approves the audit plan, and that's where this work is supposed to come out of. Okay? So the second was the work focus. The third that really jumped out, and we had some discussion on, and it's one of the recommendations about too, excuse me, excuse me, was the backlog of unimplemented recommendations, okay? There are 41 unimplemented recommendations, 25 of which are over a year old. That seems like a lot of unimplemented recommendations. And for whatever reason, right, I mean, there could be multiple reasons, but it kind of begs the question, if we're spending all this effort on developing these recommendations, and then the city isn't implementing them, you know, why not, right? And is, how effective is this? And it suggests some kind of disconnect, but it does also suggest that we're paying for a lot of work and they're not, and they're not doing anything with it. So there was those three. And there was, there was a fourth item that the council had noticed, although it's not specifically in the report, which is, since Ms. Erickson left at the end of 2008, there seems to be more turnover in the chief auditor role than I think most of us would have expected. Okay? Since in the last, in the 10 years since Sharon left, we've had at least four different auditors, okay? Not including Don Rhodes, the interim this past year, because we had Linda Burchard for a couple of years, we had Mike Edwards for a year, we had Jim Pelletier for a couple of years, we had Harriet from, for half that time, actually. And also, there were a couple other people who sort of stepped in on a much shorter-term basis than interim. So it seems like, you know, our average tenure, especially if you don't include Harriet, you know, has been something like two years, right? And there were reasons for all of them, but it kind of feels like a lot. And so it kind of begs the question is, how do we have confidence that the next auditor we hire, we don't spend a lot of money to get them here, okay? And then they're gone in a couple of years, too. Okay? So that was the, the stuff kind of rolling around in my mind, and we discussed most of in the CAO meetings, was the cost, the work focus, the unimplemented recommendations, and the tenure. And with that, let me just briefly walk through the recommendations, which were, the first one was determine where to operate on the assurance provider, problem solver, trusted advisor continuum, and there were suggestions about the discussion of, you know, functional administrative reporting, which I think, you know, we didn't really talk about at all in the CAO. Second was scope internal audits with a smaller number of hours in order to increase the number of actual risk audits we could do each year. Third was involve trying to identify performance metrics. The fourth had to do with qualifications for the city auditor position. The fifth, it was we consider contracting out a couple of internal audits with external service providers, because there is a model for that in the industry. The sixth was, why do we have so many unimplemented audit recommendations? The second had to do with surveying stakeholders, and the, and the seventh and the eighth had to do with more formally assessing city-wide risk as part of the annual audit plan, and there were suggestions on how to guide such an assessment. So that was the tenor of the discussion at the CAO committee in December, and we referred all this to the city council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Niss, and then Vice Mayor DuBois.
So what you're hearing from tonight, for people who might have just tuned in, as we're discussing the, the internal auditor at the city, and thank you both Herb and Bob for giving background on when this happened. It was, it was indeed voted on in 1983. So I would call your attention to a couple of other things. I have a marked-up copy from a couple of weeks ago, so if the numbers don't quite match, apologies. But on page seven for tonight, out of one in packet, page 116, which would have been packaged 230 two weeks ago, I would encourage you to look at what the, what the cost has been. And that was one of the concerns that we discussed with the consultant at the time. So if we look at this and we see what is our citywide budget, and how does it compare with other cities, you can see that we're not coming out on the top. And that is a real concern. That says we're really not getting our money's worth of the amount that we're putting into the audit. Just to mention this, and Councilmember Phil Seth has mentioned that we brought in somebody from another company for a period of time who left in October, I think, after being here for several months. And he could not stay, but he was from a company that does provide not only people who are, who are for rent, as he was, but also people permanently. So I'm going to mention briefly, and we'll see where we go with this tonight, but the thought of outsourcing, which would mean we would use a company which provides auditors who come and who spend their time here, but they are not working for the City of Palo Alto. There are several companies that do this. I'm bringing this up in particular because at the county, when I was a county supervisor, we had a company, I'm not promoting them, I'm just going to mention the name so that you know that, that these exist. But that one is named Harvey Rose, and in that case, they were within the building, they were part of what went on, on a daily basis, but they were not, they were not hired by the county, they weren't paid by the county, and they weren't evaluated by the county. Instead, their contract was renewed every so often, and the Board of Supervisors oversaw that and approved or didn't approve of it. So the elected body had total control over the person who was there. I think that Eric did a very good job of talking what, about what the background has been. I was also here in the 90s, and at the end of the 90s, there were some problems with the auditor at that time as well. Having said all that, maybe we're a tough city to work for. That may be a possibility. But at the same time, looking at the different numbers, the different calculations that we use to try and figure out how we should pay for this, what we were getting when we paid for it, and did it make sense, especially as Eric has mentioned, with the risk factors as well. The question tonight is really, where do we go from here? And just to indicate at this point, I probably would lean toward outsourcing. So with that, on to the third member of the committee.
I think both of you did a good job. So I think we have been pretty deliberate that we've went out and engaged a consultant. We let that consultant do their work. This report was the result. I would echo Councilmember Phil Seth's comments on independence, and I think we, I expect we all support an independent auditing office reporting to city council. There was also a follow-up letter attached after the end of the report that I thought spoke very well to kind of threats and safeguards to independence, packet page 131. The report describes a range of alternatives from kind of having everything in-house to all of it outsourced, as well as a range of work, which I think Councilmember Phil Seth talked about, from kind of pure auditing to more performance consulting. When we discussed this at the CAO committee, I concur with Councilmember Niss that the costs are very high. We have the highest cost per audit, and we have the lowest number of audits completed per employee. per employee. And so some of the recommendations, like scoping the number of hours to spend on an audit, seems to be in line with best practices at other cities, adopting performance metrics for the auditing function. And so, you know, we recommended adoption of the report, and we called out a specific focus on recommendations number five and number eight. And so number five is really to consider contracting some audits. As mentioned, we've had an interim city auditor. That person's no longer available, so we do need to make a decision. We need to move forward. I think we also need to consider the market availability of candidates. And as we move forward, we should think about budgeting this year's budget, some funds for potentially outsourcing some audits to see if we get the kind of benefits that are here in the report. At the bottom of page 12, when we talk about this recommendation number five, says that often we'd use an external firm. You get a lower cost because there's less scope creep, less demands on the times of the auditors, and you can get more experienced or specialized auditors for a particular audit. And then on number eight, I think number eight's really important, that we evaluate our risks and exposures, and that we really focus on accounting, where we're accounting for those risks. And one thing I brought up at the CAO discussion was, you know, the number of cities that have been held hostage where their data's been locked up, and they've had to spend large amount of money to just even recover that data. So I think some risk assessment of where we may have, you know, higher risk, where we should spend our auditing time, I think makes a lot of sense. So, thank you.
Thank you. I salute from Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine, and my thanks to the last year's council-appointed officers committee for the work they did on this and for this report, which is thorough. And I appreciate each of the three of you sharing your thoughts. I don't have anything extra to add because you've covered it, but I do just want to point out why I'll be supporting accepting this recommendation. Three and seven, the performance metrics and getting stakeholder feedback do seem like best practices we should have already implemented, so I think it's important we move forward with that. In terms of number five, contracting out some of the internal audits, to the extent that there is expertise available in particular areas, I think that makes sense. We have a complicated city, right? We have, we have more things here than your average city, so I'm willing to do that. And then Vice Mayor DuBois just touched on it, and this was my main concern when I read this even for our first meeting in January, was the risk assessment. So my colleagues have heard me talk about risk in the context of the rail crossings and the decision we'll eventually make there, but it certainly seems that, and Councilmember Phil Seth laid it out quite well, that there are a variety of areas where we might have risk. And if you compare that to the audits that we've been doing, I don't see the match that I'm hoping for. So again, my thanks to the committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, thanks for the CAO committee on this. I definitely think that we need to get an auditor soon. I agree with the idea that they should report directly into council, so that makes total sense. I think what Councilmember Niss said about having, outsourcing it, to me also seems to make sense. A lot of audit functions are outsourced, creates independence, and allows you to get the exact kind of expertise, because there's a wide breadth of audits we have to do. And it's hard for a small body of people to be experts in all area versus being able to select or hire the expert you need for a particular audit. In terms of types of audits, I think that performance-oriented audits, to me, are what we should be more focused on. And because I think, you know, a lot of the controls audits or, you know, where we're trying to detect fraud and whatnot, I think, you know, I think a lot of that is actually already covered through our financial orders, like when we do the CAFR and those kind of financial reports. Not to say we shouldn't have ones around control, but I think just more performance-oriented makes more sense. I actually like a lot of what the city of LA auditor does. I think it's actually quite forward-thinking. I'd love to see more of that. And it actually makes me even think that perhaps, you know, should we consider perhaps a kind of a structure like that somehow? Of course, that would require a pretty significant restructuring of our city charter, but I think that having someone that's very passionate about the city, you know, is fluent in the details of what audits are, you know, might be able to advance itself much further than it's been. Because I do agree that the cost per audit and the results that we've been getting is pretty low. But I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with what the city of LA's auditor has done, but he's one that's been pushing pretty hard on the open data. He's made a really significant impact in terms of improving the efficiency of the city, which is actually very remarkable given the size of the city of LA. So I would love for us to kind of move in that direction, but I realize that's a pretty big step from where we are today.
So I want to thank the members of the public for coming and speaking today and providing the history on the auditor's office and how it came about. Obviously, at the time, there is a need, there is a want by the voters of Palo Alto for independent office to keep checks and balances in place. And I also want to thank Councilmember Phil Seth for going through the points and to reassure some of the concerns that the community and myself, when I was reading the report, in terms of the office becoming, office that reports to the city manager, and which is not the case. I'm happy to hear that. I also agree with the rest of the points of all my council colleagues. I think the main thing is to remember that the office is there in order to be independent, to ensure that we're working efficiently, and to make corrections from the other offices when they're not using, in terms of efficiency, at any point when the city is using taxpayer monies, it needs to have a system in place. And I think the auditor's office is that. At the same time, you know, I do have concerns about everything that came out in the report in terms of the cost for each of the audits, the work focus, which I think that the council needs to take back and have more say-so in it. And also, I am concerned about the high turnover of the auditor's office. And so with that, you know, I do agree with the recommendations, so I will be also supporting the recommendations tonight.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I'll try to go through quickly because a lot in agreement with my colleagues. On the independence issue, absolutely, the city auditor function should be independent, and our code is pretty explicit about that. Where does it say? The code does say the city auditor should be independent, the charter. I think Councilmember Niss has touched on the efficiency argument that, you know, we have a public duty and trust to use our resources efficiently to do these audits and then to effectuate the changes they recommend. That's important to keep in mind. Also, we agree with the vice mayor about the risk assessment. As I look at some of our audits over the past few years, they're important, they're finding errors and deficiencies, but not what I would consider, you know, fraud, waste, abuse, or systemic risk to the city. And just looking over the list of the past few ones, the one that maybe rose to that level was the cross-border inspection audit, where there were significant cost and safety issues to the city. But as the former mayor mentioned, you know, code enforcement, we kind of know there's some problems, but is it a huge risk area? Probably not. And also, just in terms of feedback and direction for the auditor's office, frankly, I've been a little confused about how we do that. In some terms, we've had an email go out saying, you know, what would you like us to audit this year? And councilmembers submit ideas, and then somehow some of those are floated up to the level of auditing. And I remember at one point, we were going to audit the transfer of development rights, which may be a contentious topic. Does it rise to the level of a city risk? I'm not so sure. But when I think about this, I think what that shows to me is it's less about the people and the officer, and more about how we structure the work they do, and what work should be internal for risk and auditing functions, and what work could be maybe in another office of the city or could be contracted out in terms of, call it, performance management and valuation, or consulting services, as some others have mentioned. But I think, and we'll see where this goes, I see some lights, I'm still probably in support of actually having an appointed in-house city auditor. And I was just writing some pros and cons here. So if we think about a consulting city auditor, some pros are that it may be cheaper, it may be faster for us to acquire that service. As the vice mayor mentioned, availability may be an issue, lack of scope creep could be a benefit. But some of the cons for that are really quite stark for me. So one is, you know, changes in personnel. For anyone who's ever ran an outside contract, you know, changes in personnel have a big effect on performance, accessibility to the public. We can write it into this contract to make this consulting firm accessible to the public. I think having a staff member here in city hall who is a badge-reported, you know, pensionable employee brings it a little closer to our citizens, which is an important auditing function. There's also the issue about familiarity with city operations and personnel. Sometimes consultants take a long time to get up to speed on those kind of issues. So that's kind of where I am for the moment. I think a couple of things I'll just suggest to my colleagues as we kind of get into motions. It would be helpful if we accept the report. Whatever we're directing, let's be clear about who we're directing, whether it's, you know, our whole council, the CAO committee, something else. And then I would also be interested in seeing what we want to direct in terms of future work for the auditor's office, whether it all stays in-house or whether we begin to bifurcate some of those functions. So next light I see is Councilmember Phil Seth.
So let me try a motion here. And I'm going to throw this out as much for discussion, but I think, you know, you know, we need to have this discussion, right? And then see what comes of it. So the first thing I'm going to move is we accept the report. And then, see, the auditing, the auditor office is kind of a funny beast in the city, okay? Well, first of all, I mean, our mission here is to produce, is to have, is to maintain a high-quality, efficient, and independent auditing function for the residents of Palo Alto. I mean, that's, that's, that's how we measure ourselves here. So that's what we have to deliver. The auditor office is kind of a funny beast, and it really strikes at some of the limits of council. Because we council are not really an operational management kind of team, okay? I mean, that's what the city manager does. I mean, we're a little more like a board, right? The city manager's team is the operational manager. And yet, the auditor function needs to be independent, right? So it can't be part of the city manager's team, which is, so it basically puts council in an operational management role, which is not really a perfect match for, for us. But we need to move forward, okay? It's time. And so, we need to develop a plan to fill the city auditor function, right? We need to develop a solicitation to do that. And so I'm going to move that the city manager appoint an ad hoc committee to develop a solicitation to fill the city auditor function.
Just jumping in, I think, mayor appoint an ad hoc committee? Or do you mean the city manager?
I'm sorry, did I? The mayor, of course.
I thought this was going to be independent.
Boy, was that, boy, would that be bad. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The mayor appoint, yeah, no, yeah, no, boy, that, boy, that's going to go viral fast, right? No. The mayor, please. The city manager should stay far away, right? And, and you know, I mean, we're going to, we're probably going to have to have a consultant do that because we can't really rely on the city staff to be part of that. Because usually when we put out RFPs, the city staff does it, but we can't do that in this case. It has to be done by us, and so we're going to have to hire somebody. Get into that. Okay. To fill the city auditor function, which would allow consideration. And here's the tricky part, okay? Do we want to consider just an individual to run the office? Do we want to consider just the county model, which is to retain a firm to do it? Or do we want to have a broad enough measure that it would consider, allow for both and see what kind of response we get, right? So I'm going to propose that the, that this say that, which will allow consideration of firms, okay? And we should have a discussion whether we want to include consideration of an individual to run the office as well. It's my idea.
So consideration of both firms and?
Well, I was going to leave off individual.
Just firms?
Just firms, right, for the moment. If there's support for that. If there's support for individual as well, we'll put that in.
I'd second that. I may, I may fiddle it a little.
Okay. And if I can speak to that for a second, longer, right? And I think we should have a discussion.
Define the firms?
No, I think it's enough. It's the county model, right? The status quo, frankly, I find underwhelming. We have done some good work, but it's high cost. The focus isn't quite right, right? Large numbers of implementation, implementation recommendations don't get adopted, right? So, right? And I worry that if we just do the same thing as we've done before, then two years from now, we're going to be in the same spot, which is looking for somebody else, and we still got high cost, we still have unimplemented recommendations, we may or may not have got the focus right. And we have a responsibility to the community to consider some alternative approaches if we think, because I think there's a good chance we could do better, right? we've had good results in other areas this past couple of years, in public-private efforts, not exactly the same areas. But the alternative is we could spend a lot of council time and effort trying to diagnose the, you know, what's going on here and trying to manage the situation. But we're busy, and we're not a management associate, we're not a professional management team, right? And so in terms of how do we bring the most value to the city and the residents in terms of a high-quality, efficient, and independent auditing function, I think it's worth giving this a try, okay? On the topic of independence, by the way, there's inherently some dependency on city staff already. I mean, it's very, very functional, right? I mean, I mean, city council doesn't have its own payroll department, so if people want to get checks and their pensions and stuff like that, it's got to go through the city. Whereas if we went to the county model, that wouldn't happen, right? So arguably, the county model is actually more independent than the way we've got it today, right? And of course, it would still have to, to report to the city. So, so that's, I'm going to throw that out, and let's discuss how to amend it and whether we want to consider other models and stuff like that. Because we got to start somewhere, okay?
Okay. So is that your motion, accept the report and direct the mayor?
That's my motion.
Ad hoc to fill the city auditor function. Councilmember Niss, do you want to speak to your second?
Yeah, I do. Hang on a second. The maker of the motion has accepted one small change I'd like to make, which is direct the mayor to essentially appoint the CAO committee to fill the city.
Assign the CAO.
Yes. Better verb, to assign the CAO committee. direct the mayor to essentially appoint the CAO committee to fill the city.
Assign the CAO.
Yes. Better, better, better verb, to assign the CAO committee to fill the city auditor function.
To generate a specification. Be, assign the city, to, CAO committee to develop a specification for the city auditor function, which would allow consideration of firms.
Thanks, Eric. I think, I think we've discussed this pretty thoroughly. You know, just to go back and Sharon Erickson, thank you for coming here tonight. I know how strongly you feel about the auditor role and the role that you played in the past. I remain concerned, especially looking at the data that came to us tonight. We are, we're running an expensive operation, and I don't think at the present we're getting a sufficient outcome for that. So, I think heading this in another direction, which is where it can be discussed, this, having it go to CAO does mean that it, if necessary, could be discussed in public. It depends on us having a discussion with a, with the city attorney about that first. But I think that this moves us in a positive direction, and we have been in somewhat a state of, of uneasiness around this function for, for a period of time. So I would like us to move in this direction, and as I said at the beginning, I would certainly consider outsourcing.
Thank you. I see council member Cormac, then the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just ask the maker of the motion if my understanding of B is correct. The specification you are requesting would allow but not require firms, is that correct?
It would, yeah, I'm trying to phrase this so it's easy to add amendments to and change if we do stuff, right?
That may not be necessary.
But I would say, which would, yeah, yeah, require, which would focus on, which would focus on firms.
Ah, okay.
It is to go to the county model.
Okay, so that's quite different than my earlier understanding. All right. What about the third portion that you described about the work itself, right? You talked about the report and who the auditor would be, and then the actual structure of the work. Did you have thoughts around that that should be included in this motion?
I did not, but we could discuss it. At the moment, the, and actually, it's, actually, there's some discussion of this in the report too. Some, some cities have an audit committee.
Yes, I saw.
Which, which is responsible for that. At the moment, in Palo Alto, Policy and Services is responsible for the audit plan.
Receiving audits.
Receiving and recommending the audits and the audit plan, and refers to council, and council does final approval, but Policy and Services is the lead. We could have a different committee, and establish an audit committee, right?
Okay.
We didn't talk about the CAO committee, but I, it's a direction, it's, there's some discussion of it in the report, and it's a direction we could go.
And what about a timeframe for B?
Well, I think we have a need to move forward. I mean, at the moment, the seat is vacant, as many people have, have pointed out, so I think we need to.
It's somewhat definitive by June.
Think we can do it by June? By June? I hope we can do it faster than that.
You're the maker of the motion, I'm just suggesting that a timeframe would be helpful as I consider the motion.
What is it? Dooby 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 doo. Yeah, 90 days? Doing RFP in 90 days? 90 days. Depends on CAO committee.
So, so to be clear, you do not envision that the CAO committee could recommend that an individual would fill the position?
Not in this motion.
Okay.
But.
Thank you.
But it's a discussion we could have.
Okay, I'm going to think.
Vice mayor DeBois.
So, a couple of questions. Question maybe for the city attorney. So can the CAO committee meet in closed session if they need to discuss like negotiation points? Or would this be public?
As drafted, to focus on firms, this process would be public. If there were individuals who were interviewed, that component, to be hired as employees, that component of the interview and evaluation can be done in closed session.
Okay. So, I mean, I want, I want an open process, but I think we need to think about how we would negotiate effectively, and whether that means it should be an ad hoc or the CAO committee. You know, if these are going to be public meetings, we just need to think about how we do that, where we're not kind of giving away any negotiation position for taxpayer money. And then the other question is, you guys said 90 days, so what are we getting in 90 days? Is that we would get to issuing an RFP in 90 days?
That would be the goal.
So then we would have some time period for people to respond to an RFP, evaluate those, choose ones. So we're looking at a fairly lengthy process. So just something to keep in mind, if we can get to an RFP quicker than 90 days or So I guess my thoughts are, I think council needs to give clear direction to the CAO committee or an ad hoc committee, whatever direction this goes. I think it's important that they have clear direction, they know what the majority of the council supports, ideally all of us. So I do, and I do think it's important that we pick one option. I wouldn't support kind of a multi-pronged, let's, let's go try to hire an employee and look at firms at the same time. I just don't think that makes sense. I do think there are pros and cons to each approach. I heard what the mayor said about leaning towards an employee. You know, I think I'm willing to try this approach, and I think in some of the details that council member Cormac was asking about, I think we will have an opportunity to weigh in on those over time. So if this is an RFP, we'll see the responses, and then we can talk about, you know, how we manage that process. But, yeah, I'm willing to support this motion. I do think you should think about whether it should be an ad hoc or the CAO committee.
Council member Tanaka.
So, I, I think this is actually a very interesting motion. I think, you know, given some of the, some of the challenges we've had in the auditor's office, I think it's actually a good thing to try. As council member Niss mentioned, it's, it's worked in the county, so I think it could probably work here in our city as well. And I think the really important thing that this gives us is, for the things that we're trying to do, which, for me, what I would like to see in terms of the auditor's office is much more around performance auditing, where there's a wide range of things that they're trying to measure and figure out. It's much, much easier to hire an outside expert for that, because there's such a wide breadth of different things that, that needs to be audited. So I think this is the right, right thing to try. To me, it seems like it's most likely to work, and so I would, I would support this
Thank you. Council member Koo.
I have a question. So the city auditor position was voted in by the people of Palo Alto, correct?
The city auditor is in the charter, and, and it's a functional requirement, and the city does need to have an auditor. The council needs to provide for that function.
So the council needs to provide for that function. Just the function, not the person? So it can be a firm?
Yes, it can.
And it doesn't need to go out to the public for a vote?
This would, the motion would not require an amendment to the charter.
Okay, so it's the function, okay. Question for the maker of the motion. When you say consideration of firms, you're asking about county firms? You're, you're, when you say consideration of firms, are you going after council member Niss's model of having firms from, similar to the county, or?
Yes.
Is that also a person or a firm-firm?
No, this would be a, a firm to, a firm to fulfill the function, as opposed to hiring an individual to run the office internally. I mean, there may still be a need for, I mean, obviously, there's a need for some consulting inside, in the, in the city, but the audit function itself would, and if it doesn't work in a couple of years, we can try something else, right?
I thought we were trying to avoid that.
Yeah, the argument is, is what's the downside, right?
Okay. And, and within the 90 days, you, this, so I'm just trying to kind of visualize the timeline. Within the 90 days, CAO committee would come back to council with their recommendation, and from there, depending on what happens, and if, say, we go ahead, a RFP is going to be issued. Does that need to be going into this motion, or it's not necessary? It's too far down the line?
You know, I would hope in 90 days, if we get our stuff together, we might get some responses to an RFP in that time.
Even before that?
That's what I would hope, yeah.
Okay.
Let's go in on the CAO committee.
Thank you.
All right. I have a couple of questions and one or two maybe amendments. So I actually agree with the vice mayor, we should be clear whether we want CAO or an ad hoc. And then also agree with council member Koo about, is this in a comeback to council? And I think it's fairly traditional for CAO to return to council with their work product and get, you know, buy-in. So is that, is that the understanding here, that CAO goes off for 90 days, comes back to council, says, here's the RFP and the process we're looking for, can you please bless this?
Well, it's an interesting question. My hope was actually that we would get an RFP done much, much faster than 90 days.
So, to the city attorney, is CAO, can we authorize them to act on behalf of the whole council in this matter?
You can. I agree you should be clear on whether they're to develop and bring it back or develop an issue. I think at the point where CAO, if it's the second one and you want them to go ahead and issue it, at the point where they receive responses and perhaps do an initial evaluation, obviously, the final decision should come back to full council.
Right. So this, you're envisioning within 90 days, write it, issue it. Okay. Don't have any issues with that, I think we should just be clear, and let's put that in the motion somewhere. Develop, to see, to develop and issue a specification, blah, 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 and come back to council with responses for a decision, something like that, at the end, right? Is that okay?
Yeah. Return to council with responses? Yeah, okay. So do you, so do you want the, do you want the RFP to come to council first, or do you want the CAO to just issue it?
This is, CAO is developing and issuing it.
Okay.
And I mean, we can put that to a motion if people need to debate that, but I'm roughly okay with that.
Understand.
My question, I guess, is more to staff. We have three members of CAO, council member Phil Seth, Niss, and Cormac. This is going to be an RFP issued by the council, but really on behalf of the city, is that correct?
You've got room here if you need.
I know, that's.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, I mean, are we just?
You're asking, you're asking about the exact mechanics of issuing a RFP?
Yeah, like the mechanics, like, I mean, these, the CAO committee is going to go write an RFP. And I'm sure my colleagues have some experience writing RFPs. But what is the city staff going to do in terms of checking in and making sure it's sanitized and in line with our processes?
Sure. So recognizing the importance for the CAO committee to drive this process and be the decision-maker on all substance, there could be some staff support that's provided. For example, the city has a standard template for professional services RFP, so we would expect our purchasing department to identify someone who would bring that to you and talk to you about the parts that you need to customize, what the city's processes, et cetera. So we could give that kind of technical support. This seems like it would be similar to the process that CAO went through to select Mr. Harper to do this study. City staff provided technical support, and CAO made all the substantive decisions.
Okay. And then, I'm not sure who this question's to, but you're going to go draft your RFP, are you going to assign like a budget to it and what you would expect? Are you expecting to just ask for auditing services, given some conditions, and let's see what we get?
That's a good question.
And I'm, I'm not sure of an opinion.
Sorry?
So, so it's standard in, in city procurement process for professional services to leave that cost issue open and ask for a proposal? Ask for that to be a component of the proposal? And the city's municipal code has factors in it, which include cost as a factor, also include experience, qualification of the team, et cetera. So there, your code already provides a framework.
Okay. As long, as long as that's clear to the members of the CAO. One more piece I think I'd like to add, which is a little bit about the work. And so, the language I had written down is kind of building a letter B with an understanding that firms or individuals, but let's say firms for the moment, firms will contract for some audit functions and conduct an annual citywide risk assessment. I'm wondering if that's acceptable.
I'd accept that, yeah. I mean, ideally, you'd have somebody that has some experience doing this, so they'd bring something to the party on that.
Exactly. I think I can come work with the clerk in a moment. The point here is, you know, we've expressed an interest, and the report does designate potentially contracting out one or two of those audits. And so, whatever we recruit should be able to do that. And the second piece is the citywide risk assessment, a couple of us have touched on. It could be somebody else, it could be their own firm, I don't really know the parameters of that. I think we, we've just discussed here tonight that there are some audits which should remain in the auditor's office, whether that's in-house or outside. But then there are some more performance-based audits, which.
It's problematic.
Is this problematic?
It's problematic.
Which, which piece?
The in-house.
If you have the in-house people reporting to the contractor, it may not be impossible.
Okay. If you guys think this is too problematic, we can remove it, but maybe the annual citywide risk assessment is an important function?
I like the citywide risk assessment.
Like the citywide risk assessment, yeah.
Okay, let's take out the other piece then. But let's, let's leave with an understanding that this scope of work will include a citywide risk assessment.
Perfect.
That's, that's good.
I think this is looking good. I'll be honest, I'm still not sure on the firm versus an individual. And, that's another, and, and the vice mayor reminds me, is it CAO committee or an ad hoc? So because this is, I mean, we're right on time right now, we're supposed to end at 9:30, but this is a pretty important issue for our city. I'm going to open it up to another round, and let's just see what people say. Unless maker and second have some comments.
Personally, I'm okay with either way, though I think there's good arguments for both. The principal value of an ad hoc is I think it could probably move faster, but the CAO is, I mean, is, is a good choice as well. So I'm okay with both.
In doing this, we're making a very major decision. And the reason I feel strongly about CAO committee is that I, I want the public to be able to follow along with us, and not suddenly say, they did this and we didn't know about it, we didn't get a chance to view what was happening. And so this, that's, that's this opportunity. If you remember whomever was sitting in CAO last year, you, me, and Tom, right? And Tom, we sat there in open sessions in the back room and, and went over this. And I, I felt that that, that way, we, we kept it open and as transparent as we could. And the important part of this, I think, with, as I said, moving forward with something that's this much of a change for the city deserves the most transparency we can give it.
I think I find myself persuaded by that argument.
I think I do too, at least on the CAO versus ad hoc. Council member Cormac, but just everyone knows I've opened up the board, so please hit your lights.
Okay, round two, thank you. Mayor Fine. My instinct had been, prior to this evening, to retain what we have always had, which is to have a city auditor hired by the council. In listening to council member Phil Seth describe the turnover we have had since the departure of Sharon Erickson, and to council member Niss, whose experience here probably continues to exceed all of ours put together, I, I am persuaded that this is worth trying. I guess, so that, that brings another question about the RFP in B, which is, how long would we be contracting for if we decided to contract? Is this one year with renewals? Is this three years? What is the time period that, that we envision? I guess I should say that you envision.
So that's a court, that's up to council. It's quite standard to. It's quite standard to, to do two or three years. And you can, if you wish, have some provisions in there to extend.
So, if I can ask a question, a lot of cities, a lot of cities use a contractor to provide their legal services. What's typical in those kinds of contracts?
I actually don't know the answer to that question. Could ask around. But, you know, it is also standard for city professional services contracts to include a term that we call termination for convenience. And that allows, with reasonable notice, typically, I believe, 30 days, the city can exit out of the arrangement if it's not working out.
Okay, so I think we have enough information for the, this year's version of the CAO committee to move forward. I'm grateful to have the citywide risk assessment in there. And so, with trepidation, but following the lead of the people who've spent the most time on this, I will support this motion.
What's the trepidation for, you're on CAO?
No, it's, it's the old committee that's supporting it. I'm willing to do the work going forward.
Okay, so as I mentioned, anyone else who would like to speak, please hit your lights. Is there anything staff sees in this we should be aware of?
I thought you were ready to vote.
In a moment. Seems good, okay, council member Koo.
So with, I, I like that you have C in there with, in terms of the scope of work, risk manage, risk assessment is one. But are we, is the CAO committee also going to define the operating continuum? You know, what is it that you want to see in this auditor, or this firm? Do you want them to be the assurance providers, or the problem solvers, or trusted advisors? Is that going to be part of the discussion? Because I think that's an important fact of what kind of function we want to see from the auditor also, or the firm, I'm sorry. When I say auditor, please know it's firm.
Yeah, my, my, my vision is the CAO needs to discuss that.
Okay, so, does it need to go in here?
I think it's inherent. I think, I think it's inherent, but... But it could go in there.
Yeah, I would like to add it in there.
Risk assessment and... And the...
And then a discussion or... Discussion of the internal auditor function.
You know, you're, you're almost on a, you know, it's, it's not part of the scope of work. It's almost like a, a D, which is, the CAO will discuss the exact type of auditing services.
I think it's type and ownership or something?
Speaking as a, a member of the current committee, I think it's inherent in the specification, right? We aren't going to be able to specify the function unless we make a choice there.
Okay.
So is that accepted by the maker and the seconder?
Focus of auditing services?
How about the, what you really mean is the spread here?
The span or something like that, yeah. Okay, I think it's close enough, the CAO can work with it.
CAO committee will discuss the exact type and focus of auditing services. Is that good, council member Koo?
Array was the word I'm looking for, exact array and focus of auditing.
Seconder would rather, rather use array than focus.
Can, can we use that?
Instead, the word array, we'll discuss the exact array and focus.
Array is good, the other thing in the staff report, it says the approach used to deliver internal audit services. Is that something that the CAO committee would discuss? Approaches used to deliver internal audit services?
I think again, it's just inherent in what they do.
The CAO committee would discuss.
I think it's, I think it's inherent to the...
This is fine with me.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, I don't see any other lights, so with that, would you please vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. So, I'm going to now direct the CAO committee to develop and issue a specification for the city auditor function. Yeah, I just wanted to leave. Great, I know we have one more item, but let's take a five or 10 minute break. So we have two, well, the last one's, let's take a five... Yeah, let's take a five or 10 minute break, and then we'll get on to the Charleston-Rostodaro intersection.
Live from downtown Palo Alto, as the Palo Alto City Council moves along tonight. The council will not be broadcasting, will not be broadcasting next Monday night because it's President's Day. We celebrate Presidents, it used to be, we used to have a holiday for Washington's Day and Lincoln's Day, but they combined that to President's Day, where we recognize Abraham Lincoln and George Washington, the father of our country, the great emancipator. And we also recognize other Presidents as well. We, we toast them and, and think about them. And this, of course, is a result of when President Reagan signed into law the holiday of Martin Luther King, which is in January. So we have Martin Luther King in January, and we have the President's Day in February. So, that is where we are. There are some people who argue that there should be a holiday for the day after the Super Bowl, which I think is ridiculous, but it was a day of mourning, it was a day of mourning here last week. But the, we are back on the 24th, Monday, the 24th, 6:00 PM for another broadcast of the Palo Alto City Council. And then, we're back in, in March, on Mar, Monday, March the 2nd. And then on Monday, March the 4th, or, or Tuesday, March the 4th, is the State of the City address from downtown, or from the Mitchell Park Library, from the El Palo Alto Room in, at the Mitchell Park Library. So, that is two events. And the, and one interesting thing is that Monday, the 24th, it's a community policing study session, and then bike boulevard, and then council ad hoc committee presentation and discussion regarding boards and commissions. And then Monday, March the 2nd, it's potential litigation, it's a closed session. So we may be on a little later, we may be on at 7 o'clock, or maybe 6:30 or so. Then the public hearing, adoption of a resolution confirming re-debatment report, and ordering cost of abatement to be a special assessment on the respective properties described therein. And then review and acceptance of the report of the Palo Alto History Museum Roth Building at 300 Homer Avenue, fundraising goal and extension and validation period to complete the option of the lease agreement. And then discussion and direction of the staff regarding the establishment of pension funding policy. Tuesday, March the 3rd, there's no finance meeting. On Monday, the 9th, we will not have a broadcast of the Palo Alto City Council, and there's no follow-up on March the 10th. So Monday, March the 9th, because there's a conference in Washington DC, we will not have a broadcast on Monday, March the 9th. And then Wednesday, the 4th, is the State of the City address by Mayor Fine. So that is something that, to keep a note of. So, we're one item away here from finishing up tonight. It was quite a night, earlier they had the recognition, we had a recognition of the... One of the anniversary of the League of Women Voters. And then we also had the recognition of the firefighters who responded to the Sonoma County and Ventura, Ventura fires as well. So, we will be bringing you more gavel-to-gavel coverage shortly, as tomorrow night, of course, is the New Hampshire primary, where we will see how that all turns out, as New Hampshire, and really, once this happens, and we really are in to the primary season. And it all culminates on that Monday, March the 3rd, that Super Tuesday, that California is now plays a big role in. And one thing that was brought up was the strategy of Bloomberg, the former mayor of New York, who was an independent, who followed Rudy Giuliani's term as mayor, which was a very successful mayor. He also was a very successful mayor, very successful businessman. Bloomberg, of course, huge broadcasting communications. Then, he became a, he was an independent, he then joined the Democratic Party. And his strategy is to just buy out markets. And you see the ads in, all over, I mean, you, you really, you turn on the TV, there's tons of ads for Bloomberg attacking, matching himself up with President Trump, going after President Trump. So you'd have two very successful businessmen going after each other, and with Bloomberg arguing his points on climate change, and gun control, and those sort of things. And he was a successful mayor of New York, but he also got into a lot of things about sodas. A lot of people accused him of being a little bit too much of running a nanny state, and that type of thing. But he's still very successful. And his, his strategy is not to get bogged down in the minutia of these early primaries, but to wait till the big primary, hit them hard then, get on the ballot. And then, he's already saturated the market, and by then, will he be the challenger to, well, the Bernie Sanders juggernaut? It'll be very interesting. And of course, he is a, Donald Trump can't out-business him, or out-bully him, right? Because he's done it, so it will be, it is, his strategy is interesting. And his ads are certainly strong and effective, and you see them. He had a big ad for the Super Bowl, as well as President Trump. So, President Trump hasn't mentioned him much, some people say he's afraid. Although in the State of the Union address, you saw President Trump referring to socialism more, and that maybe, although President Trump seems to be focused on Joe Biden, that maybe Bernie Sanders would be his opponent, or maybe it would be a Bloomberg, or...
We are 15 minutes behind schedule, which is pretty much like an A-plus for us, right? So let's move on to item number 12, if my council colleagues could all join us, I think there's two in the back. So this is a reviewing the preferred alternative concept plan for San Antonio Road and East Charleston Road intersection, and directing staff to initiate and complete final design plans, environmental analysis, specifications, and estimates for construction. And I believe our staff has a presentation, please kick it off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Philip Cami, the chief transportation official. And tonight, I'm here with my staff, Rafael and Ruchika, to present a targeted intersection improvement project for the San Antonio East Charleston intersection. This intersection was identified in the 2017 Traffic Safety and Operations Report. And while this project is focused on near-term spot improvements, it can be modified for major plans in the future that may be identified through an area plan, new development plans, specific corridor plans, or identified in an updated bicycle and pedestrian plan. And with that, I will turn it over to the staff that worked on this project.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, my name is Rafael Reyes, I'm the traffic engineering lead and project manager for this effort. We're going on about a, a year and a half on this right now, so I'm going to briefly run through a quick presentation, and then be available for questions you might have. So this project really began out of our 2017 Traffic Operations and Safety Report. This intersection was identified as a location of high incidents, so we did start this traffic safety project to address some of these issues. The priority issues and goals to get out of this project were to improve pedestrian safety, improve vehicular safety, and then, thirdly, to improve traffic operations and congestion issues that occur at this intersection. Here is a figure, an existing aerial, it's a little bit, it's rotated about 90 degrees with the north facing to the right. So that's the JCC in the upper right corner, the 76 gas station on the upper left corner, Arco, it's on the bottom left. And an image of the afternoon congestion on the bottom right inset. So as I mentioned, this was identified as a location with high incidents reported. From 2012 to 2016, we have a breakdown of the, the various collision types, with the highest being rear ends and side slide type collisions. So we set out to address these issues. Our community stakeholder outreach really involved four community meetings, one of which was really focused at the surrounding businesses. And those started in April of 2018, and continued. We had a little bit of a break between February and August of last year. We also went to our pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee in October of 2018. And then, most recently, went to the Planning and Transportation Commission in November of 2019, and here we are tonight. We do plan to have future meetings back at our payback, and possibly another community meeting, and then taking a final design and construction contract back to this committee. So just to briefly summarize the concepts that we discussed with the community, we came up with several ideas and kind of separated them into compartments. Idea A really focused on pedestrian improvements, and also included some bicycle improvements that we looked at early on. An idea B included vehicular operational improvements. And then we lumped them all together to come up with the idea C. And through the community process, we took some features out, added some in, and ended up with a recommended idea D, which we're going to ask for your okay with, for tonight. So the idea C that includes the combination of preliminary ideas really focuses on straightening up the skewed crosswalk on the west leg, connecting the JCC to the 76 station. By doing this, we significantly shorten the crossing distances, which also reduces the required crossing time and allows green time allocation to be spread to the heavier vehicular demand approaches. We also added, early on, we looked into removing one of the southbound right turn lanes, and converting it to a double buffered bike lane. However, this led to significant vehicular operations, operational impacts. And through the community meeting process, it was removed as part of this effort. We also added a second southbound left turn lane. A lot of the collisions were resulting from long key spillbacks from the, from San Antonio left turn lane going back towards the freeways. And we also modified the approach to the frontage road in front of the 76 station. As mentioned, through the community meeting, we eventually made some changes, including bringing back the second right turn lane due to the heavy vehicular demands. We modified the receiving side on the south leg to have three receiving lanes and a separate receiving lane specifically for the frontage road, and it would also accommodate larger trucks, gas delivery trucks going to the 76 station and such. And we also modified the frontage road parking to, so that we wouldn't lose any parking spaces. And as I mentioned previously, we did keep the, the second left turn lane and incorporated an overlapping right turn phase so that the southbound right turn would get a green arrow at the same time as the eastbound left turn from Charleston. So with that, we have our recommendation for the, for the council to review the preferred concept alternative plan for San Antonio and East Charleston, and direct staff to complete a final design, environmental analysis, specifications, and construction cost estimates.
Thank you very much. Let's go to members of the public, I see two speakers, Ken Joy and Stuart Cobb, you'll each have three minutes. And just so everyone knows, alternative D, I believe, is printed up here on the walls, down there and up here.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. I'm speaking to you tonight as the chair of the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee. And I want to ask you, if you have conversations with constituents about matters such as this, please ask them to bring input to the payback. this, please ask them to bring input to Payback. Our next meeting will be on March 3 at the Mitchell Park Community Center. I want to mention that the, this staff report you have here, 10-841, does address pedestrian safety and the members of our community are certainly happy with that. I would like to highlight something on page five of this report, though. It says that one of the cons to this idea D is that bicycle conditions remain the same. And I can assure you, having gone through this intersection on my bicycle with extreme trepidation, it's challenging. So I look forward to the bicycle provisions for this intersection that will be in Phase Three of the Charleston-Arastreboro Corridor Plan. I encourage you to approve this. And I can tell you that people eagerly await Phase Three of the Charleston-Arastreboro Corridor Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stuart Cobb. And if there are members of the public who would like to speak on the side, I encourage you to please get your cards in.
Hi, I'm Stuart Cobb. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live within a couple of blocks of this intersection, and I've lived there for about 15 years. I walk through it three or four times a week. I drive through it three or four times a week. And there are a couple of problems that aren't addressed by this study that I think you need to zoom out a little bit. Number one of them, a lot of the side swipes due to the right turn off of San Antonio coming from the freeway onto Charleston. Those two right turn lanes are great, but the problem is just downstream of that is a right turn only lane at Fabian. And many, many people know that and immediately do the right turn from the rightmost lane and then jump into the left, the leftish lane, sometimes without looking to see the other person who was doing the turn right beside them. And I have almost been side swiped three or four times doing that. And so you should consider making that not a right turn only lane at Fabian. I know there needs to be a merge onto one lane at Charleston, but if there's a more, you know, the funnel that's there is more obvious than, than people trying to avoid the side swipe. The other problem is on the corner you're not showing, which is the Arco corner. A lot of large semis, and in fact, you've got some in your photo, a lot of large semis come up from northbound toward the freeway, except that they're going southbound on the freeway. So they have to make a right turn at Arco. And if you go out and stand on that corner for half an hour, you'll probably see a semi do that, and you'll see how dangerous it is for them to do that. If you look at the corner, there's tire tracks of semis on that corner, on the, you know, on the sidewalk, over the curb. If you watch a truck do that, the smart ones will break several traffic rules in order to come from, you know, straddling the two lanes on San Antonio Road and drive into the left turn lane that would be going the other way in order to make the turn with a long semi. The dumb ones won't do that, and they'll wind up side swiping the traffic light post, which stands right there at the corner. I have personally called in three or four times to get pieces of that traffic light post repaired. The pedestrian signal button gets smashed, and the walk sign gets pushed back so it's not pointed in the right direction anymore. Both of those I've called in. You should take a look at, number one, moving that traffic light post back from the corner so it's not right out at the street, so it doesn't get hit. The post got dense in it and scraped paint off of it. It's clearly been hit more than once, and I'm kind of amazed it's still standing. Number two, you should really consider buying a little bit of that corner from Arco if you have to, but rounding off that corner a lot more so the semis can make the turn. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public speakers? Okay, thank you. So we now return to council for questions, comments, or motions. The first slide I saw was Vice Mayor DuBois, to be followed by Councilmember Cormac.
So thank you for bringing this to us. I was curious about the, the gas station owner, where the ball about will be or whatever. Do we think it's going to impact his business? Has he been supportive?
Yeah, so these concept plans probably show that it would affect them, but we did meet specifically with the, the property owner and the, and the manager of the, of the 76 station on the, on the upper left corner. And, and we did commit to designing that around their delivery, the fuel delivery vehicles to be able to make, so most of them are coming from, from the Mountain View side on the bottom and kind of making a left and then a quick right into their, into their end. We would design that little peninsula to accommodate that truck movement.
They'll make a little zigzag, but they'll be able to get in.
Yeah, it's not, it's not detailed out in this concept plan, but that's something we would definitely incorporate.
Yep. And then the, the last speaker brought up a couple of great issues. The issue with Fabian and the right turn lane, is that part of the Charleston-Fabian discussion, will that be coming to us at some point?
It, it is. I was trying to pull it up real quick, but I didn't get it up in time. I don't recall if a dedicated right turn lane is going to still remain. But yes, the resurfacing and restriping of Charleston between San Antonio and Fabian is part of that Phase Three of the Charleston-Arastreboro Corridor Project.
Again, there's those two right turn lanes, which I think we need, but like you said, people are trying to merge over almost immediately. There is that funnel that's kind of past the light.
I believe that plan has a single right turn lane, but I couldn't pull it up.
No, no, I'm just saying the San Antonio two rights.
Yes.
I mean, the description was accurate. I think people, there are accidents because people need to move over if they're going to go straight.
Correct. But the, right now, the right turn onto Fabian, there's a right turn lane and then a shared through right. And I believe that's changing to just a single right turn lane in the future. But I couldn't pull it up in time, so.
And then I've also seen the issue with the trucks, the semi trucks trying to get onto 101. I do think, you know, that the county has a plan to add an interchange there from San Antonio to 101 South, but understand, may it take a while.
Yeah, that'll take a while. And yes, we're, we're also well aware of the pole being hit and gets swiped maybe once a month, actually, on that corner by the Arco. And it's definitely in, in our design concepts to move or put a new location for that pole.
So I attended some of the community meetings at the JCC. But like you said, it's been two years in process. I think one of our council priorities this year is transportation and traffic. And I think it's important to keep, keep that in mind. You know, this is 4,000 cars, 20 bikes at peak. It's a little unusual in the city that it's two major arterials intersecting. And for me, I think traffic and congestion here are a priority. So I think it's a place we need to be really careful about gridlock. I mean, I think we're going to see an increasing flow of cars. There's a lot of development along the length of San Antonio. There's a large amount of Google traffic in the area. It's kind of a 101, kind of makes a triangle there. And you got Ring Store, you got San Antonio, you got Old Middlefield Road, and they all, they all fill up for many hours a day. So I like alternative D. I think we need to keep as many vehicle lanes as possible. And I would like to see us look at, like, as we think about bikes, you know, think about where, where bikes would be routed. You know, we're building the bike bridge. Obviously, we'll have bike routes to the bridge to get over 101, connecting to Mountain View, bike, bike trails. For me, I kind of see this working similarly to the way that Bryant Bike Boulevard works with Alma, where it's much calmer if you're on a bike to be on Bryant than on Alma. And it's much better if your car to be on Alma instead of Bryant. So the other thing I would just say is like, as we continue to watch this area intersection, it may be a place to think about a pedestrian bike overpass even at some point over the intersection. So just want to say I appreciate staff working with the community. I was at some of the earlier meetings. And again, I think coming up with alternative D was a good choice for the area. And just to move things forward, I'll go ahead and make the staff motion to approve Concept D.
Second.
I was going to second it. You got there first. So moved by the vice mayor, seconded by council member Cormac, who was next on my list. And if you want to speak, to your second.
Just making things easy. Thank you, Mayor Fine. Mostly, I'm, I'm just grateful for us prioritizing the pedestrian issues that are there. I mean, we have senior citizens at the JCC, and it is, you know, a concern and has been for years. So I am really grateful that staff has seen fit to fix that. I'm also grateful for the process, which was, as Vice Mayor described, iterative, particularly taking into concerns the businesses who are worried about losing parking spaces. Appreciate that. I'm wondering, I noticed at the end of the report that we think we'll have improved levels of service. When might we evaluate that? When would we expect to sort of check and see if what we did was, worked the way we had hoped?
Well, typically, we would collect counts right before we start any work and then usually give it a, like, after all the work is complete, give it a month or so for traffic to get used to it, and then collect new counts. And level service analysis can be done really quick, so comparison.
Okay, so maybe when that comes back with, to us, you can just be specified so everybody knows when to expect it and get a report on the metric.
Definitely. Yeah. Well, the...
Great. One thing that was not clear to me is as you're coming southbound on San Antonio to turn right onto Charleston, right past the JCC, are those two lights, can you turn right on red or not in this new version? People do that now. So it wasn't clear to me from the description if, if that was going to be allowed.
Yes, it would be anticipated to be allowed. We, we did discuss options like regulatory signage, only allowing right turns from the right lane to be considered. We did look at it. If we did a no right turn on red, that could also significantly impact the vehicular operations. So we are looking into other options, like not allowing the right turn on red from the left right lane, but...
Yeah, I just think some more work on that and super clarity to everyone would be helpful. I mean, it's great that they'll be able to turn right when the people coming towards you are turning left. Some people do that now already, not naming any names or identifying myself, but I just want us to be super clear there. And then I share the concern about the right-hand dedicated turn on Fabian and people getting over. People have different philosophies. I'm a left-hand person because I just know that I don't, I don't want to be trying to get over other people who I might know or, you know, all about like, no, I'll be faster if I go on the right. So it just, whatever clarity you can provide there, I realize there are six lanes, would be, would be helpful.
I should clarify, you can make a right turn on red after a stop if it's safe.
Unless we say no right turn on red.
But the intent of the overlapping phase would be to provide a green arrow so you could make it without stopping.
Okay, great. And I think that's it. I happened to attend the PTC meeting, and I know they had a lot of thoughts to share. I agree that in the future, we'll have to figure out what to do with bicycles, but given we'll have another way for them to get over the freeway, I think we can, pardon the pun, cross that bridge when we come to it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ness.
I have a completely different kind of question that somebody asked me this morning and said, how come they're taking a look at this? Do you know how bad our intersection is? So the question is, how does, how does it get to the level where it comes to us and we have a discussion about it?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. This goes back to a report that was prepared in 2016 and 2017, which actually found the 10 worst intersections as far as collision data. It was from the 2017 report that we did on 2016 and prior data that compared traffic safety operations throughout the city. And it found that this was, you know, one of the intersections with the highest level of incidents and one that we could take action on. And so we'll be looking to do...
So is this number one of 10? Or was it a...
I would say it's in, it was in the top 10 or top three. Speaking from somebody that was not involved in that report, I was not here when that report was, well, I was here when it was published, but I wasn't here when the report was prepared or the data was pulled together or any of that. So I can tell you that it was, you know, it was high collisions, but, you know, really strategically, we should be looking at all of those intersections that are within a top 10. And we're intending to prepare a similar type of report this coming year that would look at the intersections with the highest rates of collisions and figure out how we can systematically prioritize improving those.
Because I'm willing to bet that people would be willing to send you any number of intersections that they, they think are the worst in the community. So just let us know when you'd like a few.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, just wanted to thank staff's work on this and also the planning commission. So I, I actually used to bike this intersection every weekday. So I know this intersection really well. And I think some people described it as terrifying. And if you're a biker and you're biking across, it is actually pretty terrifying. Bike lane disappears, the lane's kind of narrow. And, and for me, when my office was in that area, I had no choice. There's really no other way to get there. So I, I actually, I like the idea of D. I'm just really concerned that we're going to make a lot of changes without trying to prove the bikeability of it. You know, I think one of our, one of our priorities is mobility, which includes like bike mobility. And I guess, can staff talk a little bit about how, how does this mesh together with the plans, I guess it's like the third phase? How does it mesh together with that? How does it actually solve the bikeability of this intersection? Because it's, it's pretty bad. And I'm just trying to think of how, with what you guys are doing, is this, could this ever get better?
Sure. So the, the Phase Three of the Charleston-Arastreboro Corridor Project includes the striping between Fabian and Charleston, and that will include bike lanes in both directions all the way up to the intersection. And there's already bike lanes on the east side, like where the, from the Arco station to...
Can you put out the map of this, move it around just so that it's easier for everyone
Don't think we have a wider area map immediately. Was there one? There's, there's, that was the aerial. Just go back to the aerial. Apologize, this is the only aerial map we have available, and it doesn't extend out. But Fabian is above, up here, and, and the Charleston-Arastreboro will include bike lanes all the way up to the, to the crosswalk here. And that will improve connectivity along Charleston for bicyclists. The improvements that we showed on Charleston were removed, I mentioned the operational impacts, but also because we have limited, limited enhanced bike facilities to the north and south of this along San Antonio. And we would try to do this design to not prevent any future bike projects that might be considered along the corridor. Like, we would set the poles back.
But if we're going to mess with the street, why, doesn't it make more sense to mess with it once, like, to, to do it now versus do it later? Like, at least this, the parts that you're changing versus trying to go back and change it again? Because this could be disruptive doing this and then doing another change. So to me, it would make more sense to, if you're going to make some changes, try, try to, try to fix it for good.
So, so that was why, that was one of the original concepts that was, you know, discussed with the community that, you know, ended up being a rejected idea, frankly, because it ended up that what we have there is quite a few automobiles passing through the intersection. And we heard at the public meetings, concern about impacting the vehicular movement and concern about impacting or, or concern about improving pedestrian connectivity. And we heard that a lot more frequently than we heard the request for improving bicycle facilities at this point. That intersection is kind of an island as far as, as bicycle connectivity. So we've got the 101 interchange, which there's really no bicycle connectivity to, and potentially there will be in, in the future. And, and the rest of San Antonio, which there's not really any bicycle infrastructure. So potentially, we, we, you know, in this concept, which you see, that was that preliminary concept, you see we've got the green separated bikeway that goes across, but it's, it's connecting to nothing. So we, we just really did not get much...
By the way, I have taken that to San Antonio, just because sometimes the, under, the underpass there was closed because of the, like, the weather, right?
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I guess the thing I'm thinking about is like the east-west... But I guess the thing I'm thinking about is like the east-west on Charleston. And so I guess I'm just trying to understand how does this mesh together with your bike plans?
Well, so I would say that that is outside of our current bike plans, and that's why in the, in the introduction, I said that this could be something that's looked at as a future corridor bike and ped plan, or another, potentially an area plan, or another, you know, development plan, if new development or new changes in that area lead us to really want to look at it. But it should be looked at kind of holistically, because right now, it's really kind of the end of that bike plan.
Yeah, I guess my, my feeling, though, is that, you know, one reason why people want to bike there, because it's really scary biking it. And so, of course, you don't make people biking unless you're, unless you're forced to, like I was, I have no, no choice. And so, but if it was more bike-friendly, actually, we'd have probably people biking there, right? But it's, but it's really hard to, I mean, I think it's one thing to go across San Antonio. I think most people wouldn't do that, but at least be able to cross Charleston safely. I mean, that's, that's the part that's really hard right now, where there's a lot more people doing that.
That improvement is identified in the Phase 3 of the Charleston-Rastodaro to, to bring the bike lanes all the way up to the intersection. And east of the intersection, there's receiving bike lanes on the other side.
So why not try to make that part of that, I mean, at least for the east-west Charleston? Why not try to make that part of this plan now versus some future date? Because if we're going to restripe it and do that stuff, why not, why not try to do it now?
The anticipation is that the Charleston-Rastodaro project will move forward before this.
Oh, it's going to come before this? So wait, then how, okay, so this, so that, that plan will happen before this gets implemented?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay. But then, but this doesn't like anticipate that. So how does that?
Yeah, we didn't show it on these plans, but it's really striping changes.
The timing's been a little bit odd for both of these projects, frankly. Like many transportation projects, there's been a lot of things on hold. This project really could have been potentially implemented already and potentially could have been, I think, moved forward a few years ago. But really, you know, this, this has had some delay.
Okay, wait, some, I'm just wanting to make sure I get this straight. So you are going to improve the bike, bikeability from east to west Charleston. It's just not shown on here, and that's actually going to happen first, and then, and so what's shown here is actually not what's really going to happen. Is that, is that, I guess I just want to make sure I'm getting this straight.
That's correct. For the, the striping on, on the west part of this leg, we'll move forward as part of the Charleston-Rastodaro project, assuming that, you know, council approves.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, so that, that part's, okay, if we approve it, well, this is being approved first, but you're saying we approve it later, but that won't happen first.
So that one is getting ready to go out to bid for construction. This one is really the preliminary concept. We still have to develop the design plans and construction documents and then come back to you guys for that.
Okay, so is there going to be a bike lane on East Charleston Road?
Yes.
Okay. That goes across San Antonio somehow?
Yes. The, the plan, Charleston-Rastodaro plan goes up to the crosswalk, and we can look into striping modifications as part of this design through the intersection.
Because the crazy thing here, because I used to bike a little every day, even at night, is the lack of bike lanes is really scary, so you kind of force a bike on the sidewalk. And the crazy thing is, like, a lot of those manhole covers on the sidewalk were broken. So it's like, it's like a double whammy, right? So you had to, like, not, you couldn't bike on the street, and so you had to bike on the sidewalk. From the sidewalk, those boxes, the, you know, those boxes which cover the utility things, a lot of them were smashed or broken, like, I don't know why. And maybe because bikers had to keep biking on it, on the sidewalk. But anyways, it's just kind of a tough, tough thing. So I'm glad to hear that, but can you just show me on the map here, where would those lanes be? Because I don't see the space for it.
Okay, so yes, the lanes right now are really narrow. They're about 10 feet wide, but this lane right here and this lane combined, I believe, is close to 30 feet, which is, which is excessive for two lanes. So the center line would get shifted over a little bit to the right. This, this center line right here would get shifted over, like, this way a little bit. So you would open up a little bit of room for the bike lane.
I see, okay. And is it any way to make it protected? Because like, as a lot of people said, the car's going on this road very fast, and both on, on San Antonio and East Charleston. Is there any way to kind of make it where there's like, you don't feel like you're, you know, you're gambling with your life crossing the street?
So I, I just want to mention that this item tonight is, is not discussing that bike lane. It's, that's a separate project.
Okay. Well, I understand that, but it really should, because, I mean, it's the same intersection.
Sure.
Yeah, just briefly. Yeah, you sort of talked about, well, bike traffic there and so forth, I understand. But there's sort of this light industrial area between Charleston and 101, south of San Antonio, and sort of between San Antonio and, and, you know, Best Buy and so forth down there. There's sort of this little light industrial area. So if you live in Palo Alto, north of San Antonio, and you work down there and you want to bike there, that's, that's a kind of a creepy intersection to go through. Now, it's not a huge number of people, but, you know, but it was that way 35 years ago when I did it too, and it's still that way, only worse now. So that's, I think that's where the traffic, some of the traffic comes from. It's not a huge number of people, but if you're one of them-
Thank you. Quick time check, it's 10:20, we're a little bit behind schedule.
Yeah, I guess my, my only point is, I'm relieved to hear that this is part of it. I wish I saw that there, because I wouldn't be so alarmed by it. But, okay, it sounds like you got it covered, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. So just a quick comment, thank you for bringing this to us. Agree with my colleague, Councilmember Tanaka, that, you know, if you want more cyclists who need a design and build for that. But as staff has mentioned, we're coming back with the phases, Phase 3 of the bike plan, and hopefully, we can support it then and get some of these changes made. I think my colleagues have answered all my other questions. Councilmember Koo, I saw a light from you.
So I agree with the gentleman who said that coming off the freeway onto San Antonio, making that right turn, there's the, the issue there with the two lanes and merging. If there's a no red, no turn on red, will it back up all the cars onto the freeway and during the peak hours? It will, right?
During the morning, the queues were, were exceeding the capacity, so yes, it would in the morning peak. In the evening peak, I know the delay went to a level service F. I don't recall if the queues would block the through lanes, but that does happen from the left turn lane today. The left turn lane queue blocks some of the through lanes, and that's why we're adding a second left turn lane also.
Okay. So, so I guess we kind of want the constant flow over there to make sure it doesn't back up and cause the bottleneck.
Sure, there's, there's heavy employment right now off of Fabian. We would be designing this so that it could be easily modified in the future if we did want to implement a no right turn on red or something.
And what kind of signaling are you using in order to have safety for pedestrians crossing in that intersection, especially because there's the senior center right there? Is there any, besides the hand, is there other?
Good question. We did discuss in several of our stakeholder meetings, concept ideas, they're not really well utilized, but something similar to a blank-out sign that we use at along Alma, where when a train comes, it says no right turn, but, but something else that maybe signifies, like, watch for pedestrians or yield to pedestrians when you're turning.
But one of the key things for pedestrians in, in the plan is shortening the distance that they're in the street.
Oh, shortening, okay.
Minimizing the time, yeah, shortening it. So, so straightening the diagonal crosswalk, which makes it shorter, removing the elongated path that they would have to take if, if we go back to the original picture here. But they actually get stranded, you know, if they're, if they're crossing on, on San Antonio on that side, they get stranded and have a little bit of what we call a refuge, which is not, you know, clearly not best practice to strand a pedestrian there in between flows of traffic, and that's a long path to cross.
It is.
And then on the, on the, on the, I guess it's, what is it, the west side? I'm always used to looking at north as being top, but on the west side, that diagonal crossing is not a, it's not a, it's the longer distance to walk than the tightening up of that intersection.
How is the lighting over there at night? I mean, for pedestrians? I mean, I don't go there at night, I usually come back before, but I was wondering if maybe more lights, or is that necessary?
Yeah, that can be addressed as part of the project.
I'm sorry?
So I'm, I can't tell you what the current lighting is like. It does look like there are quite a few lights around, but that is something that we can address as part of the project.
And I, I know, we don't want to talk about bike lanes too much, but I was just wondering in Phase 3, if you might consider, so there's the 101 Bike and Pedestrian Bridge, right? That's going to be coming along, and it's gone out for, under construction. So if they're coming down Fabian Way, would they be able to do Fabian all the way across onto, you know, there's a little circular that crosses Charleston and then continues into a circle and comes out onto the, the San Antonio?
Yes, they would, I mean-
And then you have more of a dedicated kind of bike path instead of-
If they are heading south on San Antonio, I mean, they can do that today. I know the-
They can?
The intersection of Fabian and Charleston is also included with the Phase 3 project, and that includes a bike slot through the intersection.
Through the intersection in between San Antonio and Charleston, right?
I'm talking about, yeah, Fabian and Charleston.
Yeah, no, I was saying that go Fabian Way all the way across Charleston, and then you'll come out to the-
Yeah, by the Arco?
Behind the Arco into that parking lot with the-
Oh.
No, no, no. So I actually have the map, Google map up.
Yeah, yeah.
And so Fabian Way crosses Charleston and continues on-
To the Frontage Road.
Yeah, to the Frontage Road where the parking lot comes out. And then it goes a little bit more, but what I can't see is if there's a way for it to connect to Leghorn.
So there's no dedicated facilities? I believe there are sharos in that section. So it becomes a shared, like a Class 3 shared markings?
I was just kind of-
Sorry, confirming that there are sharos there on San Antonio.
There are sharos there?
Yes.
On San Antonio?
On San Antonio, yes.
Okay. So that's Phase 3. I'm sorry I brought it up. I was just kind of exploring ideas. I just want to say, you know, thank you very much for listening to, to the people who are using that intersection. And I did go to some meetings, so it was really great, the presentations and the different options that you provided to everybody. As you move forward, I know you talked about concept plans and all that, but we also know that there's a big development that is being proposed, and so please take that into consideration and what kind of traffic that's going to cause additional in the future. So thank you again.
Okay. Thank you all. Let's please vote on the board. Excellent. That passes seven to nothing. Thank you all very much to staff. We have one last item, item number 13. It's adoption of a resolution scheduling the city council summer break and winter closures for 2020. We can adopt Attachment A, scheduling the city council breaks for the dates as listed, and find this action exempt from CEQA. Is there a motion? I'll, I'll move the staff resolution.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor.
Any comments, questions, amendments? None? Would you please vote on the board? Thank you. That passes seven to nothing. We've got our summer and winter breaks. Thank you all very much.
We're going to come back and put something in the ballot.
Not getting into that. Last item for tonight is council member comments, questions, announcements. I'll just make one little quick announcement. Last week, myself, Councilmember Niss, and Councilmember Cormac were at the Emergency Services Volunteers event, where they awarded a number of residents for their dedicated service to keeping Palo Alto safe and resilient. Councilmember Phil Seth.
I went to the SFO Roundtable meeting this week, or last week, in Millbrae, and the city has requested that the SFO Roundtable install permanent noise monitors to replace the temporary ones, where there was a letter from the city. And they expressed support and said that they have sent a letter to the FAA requesting essentially permission to do this. Has to do with the funding forum and so forth, but the amount of money is relatively small, $35,000 for one of these monitors, but the FAA, according to the Roundtable, the FAA has to give them a waiver to use that money for jurisdictions outside the noise area. Now, it's pointed out that there are some existing jurisdictions like Daly City, which are already outside the noise area, and the argument, the explanation is they're legacy areas and we're not. So the sausage-making continues.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Three things. First, I'll add to what Mayor Fine said. In addition to the Office of Emergency Services giving awards to community members, the San Francisco-Cheato Creek Joint Powers Authority received one, and Director Ruben Abrika from East Palo Alto joined Councilmember Niss and me in receiving that on behalf of the SFC JPA. Second thing is, is last Friday, I attended the ABAG Special General Assembly, and in the absence of everyone else was our designated vote. It was very straightforward and unanimous. It has to do with us being able to, ABAG being able to amend their budget so that we can request more money. It's $5.9 million that's available to jurisdictions to increase the amount the consultants will be able to use for designing our new housing element. So, a little bit, little bit complicated, but it's basically like, you know, more money will be available to the city, so it was pretty pro forma. And then the third thing is, I'm, I'm serving on Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency as a director. I probably neglected to tell you that I was added to the Board Policy Committee last year, but they have asked me to be the vice chair, and starting Wednesday, I will be the vice chair of the Board Policy Committee as well.
Cool. Councilmember Niss.
So let me do something slightly different. I'd like to acknowledge Ellen and Dennis Smith, who are here, and they are League of Women Voters' observers. So if you see them on Monday nights, they're here observing, and I think, are you both official, or is one of you really official? Both official?
Doos, pay.
Great, great. Thank you for coming.
And there will be others on other weeks.
Yes. I remember.
So keeping us on our toes. Thank you. Just a reminder, we do not have a regularly scheduled meeting next Monday for the holiday. With that, we are adjourned at 10:30. Thank you.